Check one, two, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four. Check one, two, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call to order the regular town council meeting for October 14th, 2025. Thank you all for being here. I know many of you, this may be your first and it may be your only time you'll attend a council meeting, so welcome tonight. We'll begin with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be offered by Reverend Dr. Kristen D. Hanson, the Senior Pastor of First United Methodist. Reverend?
Hello to the Gilbert Council. It is an honor to be here to share tonight and to share in our prayer as we begin tonight. I just wanted to say from First United Methodist Church, we've been incorporated here for 110 years, and this is our anniversary year, and we are so excited to celebrate that with our town and have this long history with you all. So, let's pray together. God, we thank you so much for this evening and for this time that we have to share and to speak our minds and to be the people who are gathered here in this little town of Gilbert, almost 300,000 people. We're incredibly thankful for the growth and the development and the kind and gentle hands that have nurtured this community for all of these years. We pray that we might be able to share our minds and our hearts together and work together towards the good of our community for all people. In Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Well, I suppose I'm supposed to lead us in the pledge, but first I'd like to introduce these young people from Maayak and let them, well, let them lead the pledge, and these two young people will speak about why they became part of Maayak and what they've learned.
Hi, my name's Baron Vaughn, and I go to Perry High School, and this is my first year in Maayak. And I think something that is amazing about Maayak is it gives us the opportunity to learn about local government. And last meeting, we got to dive deep into the different operations that run here at Gilbert.
Hello, I'm Mackenzie Redford, and I'm a junior at Gilbert Classical Academy. I joined Maayak because I wanted to be more integrated into our community. And what I learned today is that recently, we have adopted AI to use in the fire department and police department.
I pledge allegiance to the United, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you who don't know, Maayak stands for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. We meet with this group quite often and throughout the school year, and they learn all about the town and their responsibilities in the town, and we're thankful to have them. Roll call.
Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bonjavani.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kenny Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Monte Lyons.
I'm here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Here.
Aquarum is present.
Thank you. We have several proclamations. We'll start with the one declaring the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Councilmember Bonjavani.
Keith, you want to come up here for your presentation? Okay.
Good evening. On behalf of the Gilbert's Domestic Violence Awareness Month Committee, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight and to highlight October as the National Domestic Violence Awareness Month and promote it in the town of Gilbert. My name is Keith Bradshaw. I'm the Counseling Manager for Gilbert Youth and Adult Resources, which is a licensed outpatient counseling facility that operates as a section within the Gilbert Police Department. It is my privilege to serve as the committee chairman and work alongside these dedicated committee members to raise awareness for domestic violence and speak out about abuse in all of its forms. As you can see from the slide, our committee is comprised of professionals from several different departments within the town of Gilbert, each person playing a unique role in our objective to foster greater awareness and to prepare and host our annual awareness event for our community. Our endeavors to successfully reduce domestic violence requires a collaborative effort between the town and its community stakeholders, who provide substantial support, education, and resources to those who are victimized and need assistance. As we work collaboratively, we have developed professional partnerships that have maximized the way we execute our interventions and services together in order to decrease lethality risk to survivors so they are safe and prosecute offenders so they are held accountable. Each of these 13 community agencies help us achieve positive outcomes in the lives of those directly affected by domestic violence and strengthen our resolve as a community to be more proactive in recognizing and intervening when we suspect domestic violence is taking place. The domestic violence movement has come a long way since 1989, when Congress designated October as for federal observance as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. However, domestic violence continues to be the antithesis of social equality and establishing healthy family relationships, despite the fact that it is preventable. One reason is that many people do not know the dynamics of domestic violence and how it shifts power and control in an intimate partner relationship exclusively to one person. Listed on this slide, you can see the various tactics used by the offender to submit the survivor into resignation, usually because fear and anxiety are constantly exploited to keep them in check. Notice that of all the different ways DV is perpetrated, very few of them actually involve physical abuse. However, physical violence is often implied to result if compliance is not met. What makes domestic violence so challenging is how much of the maladaptive behavior is shrouded in secrecy and often behind closed doors, making detection very difficult. Then, once the cycle of domestic violence gains momentum and the power and control is surrendered to the other person, it makes getting away from this traumatizing relationship very difficult. In fact, on average, about seven attempts are needed before the survivor successfully breaks free. This is why we all need to be more socially assertive and courageously asking questions and speaking up when something seems to be amiss. For example, in Gilbert, last year, we had 1,942 DV calls for service, which resulted in 1,700 victims. Even so, we still live in one of the safest cities in the nation, but how ironic it is that some people who go home in Gilbert are therefore in the most dangerous place. Domestic violence, the Domestic Violence Awareness Month theme for this year is partnering with survivors towards safety, support, and solidarity. It emphasizes three components: the dangerous reality of domestic violence and how we can work to make survivors more safe; number two, how we should reduce stigma and hold nonjudgmental views of victims so they feel supported; and three, how we can engender unity and solidarity, building bridges of trust and understanding between survivors and the community. Above all, this theme is a very good reminder to all of us of what we should do when anyone who is disenfranchised or marginalized in any way from any form of oppression or social injustice. It really becomes our initiative to take a stand. The highlight of our DV awareness campaign will be on October 23rd at 5:30, right outside Town Hall, as we host our third annual Domestic Violence Awareness Month event. We are pleased to have Mayor Anderson, Chief Solberg, Assistant Chief Garza, and others address us, including a DV survivor who will be courageously sharing her story publicly as a reminder to us all that domestic violence does not discriminate against anyone. We hope that everyone will join us for this special event, where we have over a dozen nonprofit community agencies hosting resource tables and talking about their services, as well as free servings of Jeremiah Italian Ice. As I conclude, I want to acknowledge the support from our past and current town council members, vice mayors and mayors for their support, to Gilbert's commitment to combating domestic violence. Their vision and leadership is evident in our forthcoming Gilbert Advocacy Center that broke ground in January and is about 50% build out currently. This innovative new building, which combines trauma-informed care with trauma-informed design, will stand as a beacon in the future and be emblematic of Gilbert's intolerance for domestic violence. Please go to our website shown on the screen to learn more about our DV awareness campaign and more information about our upcoming event. Thank you.
Keith, you come up here? DV group, you want to come up also? Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas domestic violence is defined as a willful intimidation, physical assault, battery, sexual assault, and/or other abusive behavior as part of a systematic pattern of power and control perpetrated by one intimate partner against another. It includes any behaviors that intimidate, manipulate, humiliate, isolate, frighten, terrorize, coerce, threaten, blame, hurt, injure, or would, or would someone, or wound someone physically, emotionally, or psychologically. Whereas domestic violence affects over 12 million Americans each year across all demographics, including age, race, gender, sexuality, religion, education level, and economic status. Domestic violence does not discriminate and can happen to anyone, and it looks different in every relationship. No one experiences it in the same way, although the underlying objective of all domestic violence is to assert power and control over another. Whereas Arizona ranks as the fifth highest state in America for domestic violence. And between September 1st, 2024, and September 1st, 2025, Gilbert's Police Department has responded to over 1,900 calls for service related to domestic violence and made 1,348 arrests. Whereas the dedication of Gilbert's family, violence detectives, police counselors, prosecutors, and victim advocates, and interns working harmoniously on multidisciplinary teams to reduce lethality risk for the survivors, while promoting justice through Gilbert's Domestic Violence Specialty Court, that empowers survivors with a voice and holds offenders accountable, and offers rehabilitation through court-mandated counseling. And whereas Gilbert actively serves on the Maricopa Association of Governments Domestic Violence Subcommittee to ensure regional discussions, efforts, and policies support domestic virus survivor, I'm actually the liaison for that. And whereas Gilbert is committed to increasing domestic violence awareness and providing the resources necessary to reduce its perpetrations in our community and support survivors through all forthcoming family advocacy center that will open in the fall of 2026 to provide trauma-informed care through advocacy, therapy, and forensic services to domestic violence survivors. And now, therefore, I, Chuck Bonjavani, on behalf for Scott Anderson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Gilbert, Arizona, and invite all members of our community to attend Gilbert's Third Annual Domestic Violence Awareness Event at 5:00 PM on Thursday, October 23rd, 2025, held just outside Town Hall, to learn more about how we can eliminate domestic violence in our community. Thank you all.
We next have a proclamation declaring October 2025 also as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Vice Mayor Buckley.
All right, getting some last-minute instructions here. Could everyone come down for the Breast Cancer Awareness Month? Hi, ladies. Okay, would one of you like to speak? Which one of you are, do you want to speak before I read the proclamation? Are you, oh, okay.
Hello. Hello, can you hear me? Hi, guys. Okay, I'm Angela Newson. I am a mom of four, and I am currently fighting breast cancer, not done with it, in the middle of the battle. And also, it's really close to my heart because my mom recently lost the battle with breast cancer, too. So, it's just popping up in so many places now, and younger and younger. Like, I was in my 30s when I got diagnosed, and so it's just really important to have the awareness. It's really changed my life in so many ways. It's changed my identity. It's changed how my strength looks now. And so, I just love that Gilbert can recognize this and do an awareness month, so.
Hi, I'm Dr. Angela Savary-Muthu. I'm a medical oncologist at Dignity Health Cancer Institute. It's an honor to be here with you all to promote Breast Cancer Awareness Month. At our facility, we have interdisciplinary services of medical oncology, radiation oncology, genetic testing, and surgical services as well. And if there's anything important I can say today, it's that, you know, breast cancer affects one in eight women, and early detection is so key to survival. And so, if I can help promote, you know, women, definitely starting at the age of 40, earlier, if there's a history of breast cancer, to get your annual mammogram so that we can catch breast cancer early and help save lives. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ladies, very much, and, you know, our heart goes out to you. So, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast, breast cancer is one of the most commonly diagnosed cancers in women, and also affects men, with one in eight women being diagnosed in their lifetime. And whereas, while breast cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer death among women, when detected early and treated effectively, the five-year survival rate is very high. Whereas October is annually recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month to increase public awareness about the disease and to emphasize the importance of early detection, education, and access to quality care. And whereas breast cancer screenings, including mammograms, are critical tools for early detection and are vital for saving lives. And whereas, we honor and celebrate the resilience of breast cancer survivors and stand in solidarity with those currently undergoing treatment, while also remembering those who have lost their lives to this disease. And whereas, the generous support and timeless effort of volunteers, caregivers, researchers, and healthcare professionals are essential to finding a cure and providing support to those effective and affected. And whereas, by raising awareness and promoting proactive health measures, our community can work together to reduce the incidence of mortality rates of breast cancer. Now, therefore, I, Bobby Buckley, Vice Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, do hereby proclaim October 20, 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you, ladies, very much. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation declaring October 2025 as Community Planning Month. Councilman Lyons.
Hey, Kyle, can you and the team come up, please? I just wanted to introduce our planning team here. One of the things that, you know, we're going to recognize them for the efforts that they have put in in creating this beautiful town that we live in. And I wanted to tell you guys this. I brought my father-in-law here for the first time a couple months back, and when he looked at Gilbert, he was blown away at the beauty and the symmetry and the, just the pleasantness of the community. He's 87 years old, and he comes from the Old World, but he was really, really impressed. And all of you, you know, contribute to that, and I think it's a great testament to this community, and it's why so many of us live here. So, I want to thank you all for that, so.
All right. Well, I guess I will just say it's an honor to be here with my colleagues, the rest of the planning team. For this recognition, it's our, our pleasure to help implement some of the plans that are adopted by our voters and bring, bring that vision to fruition.
All right. With that, I'd like to read this proclamation. And I am blind, so bear with me. All right. Whereas, change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas planners can help navigate this change with data-driven insight and expertise that provides better choices for how people work and live. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, equitable and inclusive planning ensures that all voices are heard and considered in shaping the future. And whereas, the full benefits of planning require publicly elected and appointed officials to understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and in plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as the National Community Planning Month throughout these United States of America and its territories. And whereas, the American Planning Association endorses National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight how planning is essential to every community and how planners are uniquely positioned to identify solutions to communities' most difficult housing, transportation, and land use questions. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of appointed planning commission members who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the town of Gilbert. And whereas, we recognize that many valuable contributions made by the professional community and the planners of the town of Gilbert, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continuous commitment to public service by these professionals. Whereas, the town of Gilbert has demonstrated a commitment to thoughtful planning through adoption of the 2020 General Plan, I now therefore, on behalf of Scott Anderson, our mayor, do hereby proclaim October of 2025 as Community Planning Month. Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Our next presentation will be something a little bit different tonight. We want to set the stage for those of you here to talk about water in Gilbert. We want to give a brief presentation that may help to provide some information for you. We want to make sure you have all the information you need. And we want you to have the opportunity to also let us know what your thoughts are. You have several opportunities. I know there are some out in the lobby also that we, and we will be going into this presentation here shortly, so if they can come in, please come in. But you'll have the opportunity tonight to, in communications portion of the agenda, to express your thoughts, your feelings, and give us some good input. We want you to know that there are also across the lobby in the tower room, if you have further questions that you'd like to actually talk to a staff member about, we have some staff that's in that room, able to answer questions and help you with any information you're looking for. We want you to have as much good information as possible and we want to hear from you also. So we'll start first with the presentation. I think our Public Works Director, Jessica Marlowe, is going to be making the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council, for the opportunity to come here and speak to you tonight regarding recent frustration that's been expressed around high utility bills, water rates, and our utility billing portal rollout. I'm going to spend some time here, kind of sharing with you what the town is doing to address those concerns. First, I want to take a minute to help kind of walk through what may contribute to a high utility bill. Especially in the summer, there are a lot of different factors that can cause utility bills to increase. First, we did have rate increases that went into effect in April. We've had several increases over the last few years, including a 50% increase in 2024, a 25% increase in April of 2025. And then our sewer rates also increased in April of 2025 by $30 a month. So in April, with all other things being equal, no change in consumption on a utility bill, the average customer would see their bill increase by about $40 a month. The second, the second thing I want to talk a little bit about is more accurate meter readings. So we have a meter change-out program that's been in existence since, prior to my tenure with the town 11 years ago, where we change out several thousand meters every single year. And they get changed out based on reaching the end of their useful life, which is typically 15 to 20 years. Or if they fail early and they stop reading altogether, then we get a report on that and we'll change those out. Every new meter that we install in the town now comes with a report from the manufacturer that was tested per AWWA standards that shows that it meets those accuracy requirements for three different flow rates, low, medium, and high. Old meters often under-report when they start to fail. They slow down and they stop reading as accurately. So even on the door hanger that we share when we change out a meter, there's a statement at the bottom that says your usage may go up as a result of having a new meter. The new meters are also more sensitive. The technology is different and so they can detect much lower flow rates. So small leaks or very, very small usage is now detected with these meters that maybe previously wasn't detected with the older-style meter that has a lot of moving parts inside that can wear down over time. That being said, with, we, this year, we've changed out 3,400 meters in the system and 14 of them have been sent back for warranty-related issues. That's 0.4%. And those are typically actually communication errors where the meter just won't connect to our system, so it won't send a read, so we send it back and put a meter in that we can get the data out of. We have over 90,000 utility customers. People are not perfect, technology is not perfect. We expect that there will be errors and there will be anomalies. We have an entire customer service team, but that's their job, is to answer resident questions, partner with them, to investigate and help solve any problems they may have or any questions they may have with their utility bill. The third thing that we have seen in recent months that is contributing to some higher bills is unpaid balances that are carrying over. Now, with the utility billing portal system transition, residents that were on auto pay had to sign up for auto pay again in the new system. And that resulted in maybe a gap in not having a bill paid for a month or two. That happened to me. I got my August bill and it was for both June and July because I didn't register in the portal right when it went live. So I got a bill for two months. We've seen several that have a compounding issue of carrying over bills that are causing higher, higher bills than they would expect. Yeah, so, but you do not have to be registered in the portal to pay your bill. You can use your paper bill and send a check in. You can come to Town Hall and pay your bill. We actually have almost double the amount of people in the new portal than we had in the old portal and double the amount of people registered for auto pay now than we did previously. So the new portal is great. It's going to have a lot of really great functionality and information once it's fully, once all of its functionalities are active. So the last thing they talk about that contributes to high water bills is just increased summer water usage and undetected leaks. June through September are the hottest months in Arizona, obviously. July and August are historically our highest water production months. And that's, it's double what it is in January, February, and March, literally double as much. So we know from that trend alone in how much water we have to produce, that many residents have the same type of usage pattern where their summer months will double what their winter months are. Additionally, you know, irrigation leaks happen particularly in the summer when you're running your irrigation more. Those can often go undetected because of just irrigation patterns and how hot it is and how quickly water can disappear. So that being said, we hear the residents' concerns. We understand that they are frustrated with all of these different compounding factors that have happened, kind of coalesced all at once. And so what the town is doing in order to mitigate those concerns is hiring a third-party independent contractor to come in and do an audit of our AMI radio and meter system. They will verify the accuracy of the meters, verify the accuracy of the AMI radio system. And then those results will be made public for complete transparency. Anything that is found as a result of that audit will absolutely be corrected. We are committed to making sure that the bills are accurate and that the residents, you know, are getting accurately charged for the water that they're using. In addition to that, we're going to be expanding our customer support services. So we're looking to contract additional resources for our, both our water conservation team as well as our customer service team in order to provide additional capacity for water efficiency checkups and to help reduce wait times for calls when people are calling customer service or responding to emails that our team is getting as a result of the, just questions that they have regarding portal registration or their billing, their billing challenges. There are also things residents can do to help start that process, including checking, checking their usage and checking their usage history. They can log into the billing portal or check your paper bill. There's a graph that shows, you know, year-over-year consumption there. But they can look at the water dashboard. They can see, you know, maybe April to May to June to July, you're seeing it go up and it's a lot higher, but what does it look like compared to last year at the same time? The patterns are typically, typically similar. So if you see a high bill in August this year, check to see if you had a high bill in August last year because it could just be a pattern of your consumption. The second thing they can do is do a simple leak check at their home. We have a QR code here. We have a lot of really great videos and tutorials online for how residents can start that process themselves just by turning off all the water in the home. Check your meter. If it's still moving, water is going somewhere and that would indicate that you have a leak. I will say, even if the meter's not moving when you turn everything off, you could have an irrigation leak. Those are not going to show up unless your irrigation system is on. And then you just, it gets a little more complicated and that's where we can come in and help with the water efficiency, water efficiency checkups. So we have those available. Again, we'll have expanded capacity coming soon. We'll have some additional resources in there to be able to complete more of those and get to more residents on that side. We have water conservation workshops that are free that are coming up. We have water conservation rebates that I'll talk a little bit more about. And then we also have a utility billing assistance program for those that may qualify based on income. And then the last thing they can do is contact the town directly. If you still have a question about your bill, about your consumption, please reach out to us. We are here to help investigate it. We can't investigate it if we are not contacted by the residents themselves. We can do additional, we can do additional meter testing. We can do the water efficiency checkups. We can help walk through and see and troubleshoot. We've got our team outside in the tower room, as Mayor Anderson mentioned. I did see a few people out there talking with them, so that's great. We're grateful for them to be here tonight to be able to help people answer questions and start, start that process. But then when you work with the town, we absolutely, if there is a meter error, we will adjust your bill. If there is a leak found, we have resources to help. If the bill is accurate, then at least maybe resident will have a better understanding of their usage and how it contributed to their bill and how we may be able to help in other ways with just, not necessarily leak detection, but even just the efficiency checkup and modifying watering to use less water in general. Posting on social media is, social media is a great tool for the community to keep people informed and keep people connected. We cannot help if it's not reported to us. We have seen hundreds of complaints and concerns on social media. That is not translating to people reaching out to us to help. So we are just asking for residents that have questions, have concerns, need, need support in investigating an issue or answering a question about their bill to just please reach out to us because we really, we really do want to help and we want to make sure that people are getting billed accurately. So I want to talk a little bit about the rate increases now. These rate increases are vital. They are non-negotiable. They are absolutely critical for us to be able to fund our future water resiliency and water resource security. They're funding our North Water Treatment Plant reconstruction as well as drilling nine new wells for water resiliency to prepare for drought and shortage that is almost certainly coming on the Colorado River in 2027, now and for future generations. And so as part of those, those rate increases, I already mentioned, we had, the council in April of 2024 adopted a three-year phased rate increase approach where we've seen two of those already, 50% in April of '24, 25% in April of '25. And we're currently evaluating the third year of what that, what that looks like, but it was planned or proposed to be another 25% in April of 2026. So again, just to kind of recap, things are available for residents right now and what's coming in the future. Financial assistance, utility bill assistance program, water reduction assistance with irrigation controller rebates. We've got zero-scape conversion rebates. We've got free water conservation workshops, the water efficiency checkups, online tutorials, the portal. One of the great things that we have with the portal and with the new AMI system that's going to be coming early next year is the ability to detect what we call continuous consumption. So if a meter runs for more than X number of hours continuously, it will be able to alert people that they may have a leak because their meter's been running nonstop for a shorter period of time versus waiting a month and then getting a bill and seeing suddenly you had this huge increase in consumption. So that's actually something that the AMI program that we have, we got several million dollars in grants from the Bureau of Reclamation specifically for that AMI conversion program because it is a proven technology for helping with water conservation and leak reduction. So we have, again, we have, we're doing additional meter testing as it's warranted, adjusting bills already if errors are found. We're working on getting the audit together. We're working on a scope right now and getting the funding for that. And it's likely going to be a contingency request. And just trying to increase customer support overall. This is kind of a little bit of a recap as well, but the AMI radio program has been in place since 2020 and we've installed about 52,000 radios so far. Those go on new meters as they're set, but they also are installed on old meters that are still in the ground that are still good, haven't reached the end of their useful life. We'll be continuing to install meters on the rest, or radios on the rest of the meters over the next couple of years so that the entire system is on that AMI network. And the AMI network is really just the way that the meter read gets transmitted to our system automatically versus having to go to every single meter to upload that data. We have the new billing portal that launched, our rate, rate implementation. And then, like I said, we're investigating, everybody that calls, we are investigating. Daily, I see emails back and forth from water conservation, from utility billing, from our meters teams, investigating and looking into the issues that are people, people are bringing to us. And then, as I mentioned, we'll be doing the third-party audit. Increased customer support with full public report of all the outcome of those audits. We also will be, when we first launched the utility billing portal, there was 120-day grace period where we were not doing any late fees or any disconnects to allow people to transition to the new portal, get set up in auto pay, and get everything kind of established. So we are going to extend that and there will not be any late fees or disconnects until the audit's complete and the results of that audit, you know, any, if there's any findings of that, we're able to address those as well. We do encourage people to stay current on their bills because they will be responsible for whatever portion of the bill they're responsible for once we finish this entire process. And so we just don't want people to get too far behind. And finally, we're going to be implementing several listening sessions. We've had council members that have expressed an interest in participating in listening sessions with the community. These council meetings are very, "I'm here presenting, you can ask me questions, but public comment, they can speak to you, you can't answer." And for residents that want to have that two-way dialogue, we're going to be setting those up as well. So sometime in the next 30 to 60 days, we're still working on a schedule and planning and coordinating all of that. And then we'll be able to notify the residents of when those sessions are happening with the town newsletter, which you can sign up for, you know, as well as other outreach methods. So I just here provide some contact information. We've got really great resources online regarding utility bill questions, frequently-asked questions, the utility portal, our customer service line, our utility bill assistance program, and again, all of our water resources, water conservation resources as well. So just to kind of summarize, we, here, we are listening. We are going to do an audit to verify the accuracy of the billing system, of the meters, of AMI system. We are absolutely committed to accuracy in our billing and making sure that we correct if there are any errors out there, making sure that they're mitigated and just encouraging people to reach out to us with their questions so that we can address them directly. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Council, we'd like to give you up, ask questions or make comments. Councilmember Torgerson.
Well, I think this is a little out of order here, but I wanted to make a couple comments. First, as a Gilbert Town Councilman, I find it deeply concerning that former Mayor Bridget Peterson has chosen to publicly comment on Gilbert's water and sewer rates and in doing so misstated key facts. Sadly, the reporter failed to check his facts. His youth and inexperience...
How can you mic, Jim?
I thought I had a loud voice. I guess I don't. Sadly, the reporter failed to check his facts. And his youth and inexperience showed. Let's start with a $515 million transportation bond approved five years ago. I opposed that bond because it was overly broad and lacked clarity. During that time, my campaign sites opposing it were taken down, a clear violation of my First Amendment rights. Mrs. Peterson's disregard of First Amendment rights was not isolated. Others experienced similar treatment and the town ultimately paid settlements as a result to several disenfranchised residents. There was no delay in using the transportation bond funds for transportation bonds or transportation projects. Mrs. Peterson's tenure as mayor was marked by extremely poor conduct. Her behavior towards colleagues and staff became so unprofessional that the town hired a mediator in a futile attempt to curb her boorish and divisive actions. The fact that she is now attempting to drag me and others into a situation that she helped create only underscores why the entire council ultimately unified against her bid for reelection. It is equally troubling that Mrs. Peterson, now residing in surprise, has attempted to mislead Gilbert residents by suggesting that a transportation bond had anything to do with water and sewer rates or the North Water Treatment Plant. It did not, and she knows that. For clarity, water and sewer operations are funded through enterprise funds, which are entirely separate from the town's general fund or transportation funds. By law, every dollar collected from these funds must go directly to maintaining and operating water and sewer systems, nothing more and nothing less. Transportation dollars... Transportation dollars do not pay for water or sewer infrastructure. Gilbert residents do deserve honesty, and that is why we are here today, to try and see what we can do for everyone. And if I sound angry in my tone, please don't mistake it for anger at anyone in this room. I am frustrated as you are. In fact, I want to thank you because I know what you just said was challenged, and I could hear it in your voice. And it's not easy for this young woman to stand in front of a lot of people that are angry. And the sooner we start treating each other as though we understand that somebody's doing their job and trying, the better off we are. But before we get into this discussion this evening, I want to make a few more things perfectly clear. I voted against the water increase in December 2023 along with Councilman Bon Giovanni. My concern is it would lead to year after year increases, reopening the same wound every time residents received their bill. The council majority chose a different path, municipal bonds that would attach to our rates for 20 years or more. The approach lessened the immediate pain, but guaranteed higher long-term costs. When the plan came up for final ratification in April 2024, both Councilman Bon Giovanni and I voted in favor, knowing that a divided council could damage the town's bond rating and drive interest rates even higher. It was a difficult choice made to protect residents from unnecessary financial strain. From the beginning, I was adamant that we conduct clear and extensive public outreach. Anytime government reaches into someone's wallet, it owes them an explanation in detail. Staff did make efforts, huge efforts, to communicate, but that message did not connect, and for that, we must all take responsibility. When sewer rates increased, the sewer rate increases came the following year, we were told they would be nominal, until they weren't. I was blindsided by the scale of the increases. These recommendations came not from staff, but from a citizen board made up of Gilbert residents, your friends and neighbors, not town employees and not elected officials. The message that our water and sewer infrastructure was at a failure point had not reached the public yet. I again pushed for outreach and a clear explanation before asking ratepayers to shoulder more. My no vote on the sewer increase early this year was not a statement against the need for the repairs, not whatsoever. It was a statement for transparency. I wanted a sunset clause to assure residents that there was an end in sight, and I wanted the average Gilbert household to understand why we were asking for more of them. The system was built was focused on the average household using 8,000 to 10,000 gallons per month, but the unintended result has been crushing bills for some residents on larger lots, mine being one of them. That must be addressed quickly. Councilman Bon Giovanni has been working on a smart approach to that issue, and I fully support finding relief for those most affected. I also want to address something that goes beyond rates, and it is the tone of our public discourse. Every member of this and previous councils has served out of a genuine desire to contribute to this community. To my knowledge, no one has ever used their seat for personal gain. When people post day after day that everyone is corrupt, and it doesn't just hurt those that serve, it divides neighbors, erodes the community we've built together. Social media gives everyone a voice, but it's using it to spread baseless allegations, silence reasoned conversation. I've seen memes suggesting that developers wrap their arms full of cash around the mayor. That is false and beneath our community. Mayor Anderson's a good man, acting in good faith. Even when I disagreed with former Mayor Peterson, I defended her against unfounded corruption claims. False accusations help no one, and they drive good people away from public service. If you attack and insult those who are trying to do the right thing, eventually no one will want to serve, and that's not who Gilbert is. I have always maintained an open-door policy. I welcome thoughtful ideas, differing opinions, and respectful debate. That's how we get better results, not yelling, not rumors, and not hostility. They make understanding impossible here. The truth is Gilbert is facing decades of deferred maintenance and cumulative decisions. This is not the fault of one council or one councilperson or one staff member. No one ever intended to fail this community, not one person. But one thing is certain, we cannot fail in providing clean water and reliable sewer service, never, not once. If you lose your water or sewer service, your home becomes uninhabitable. These systems cannot fail. And while we all may disagree on priorities, we must stand united on this fact. We are working to get ahead of system failures and to build sustainable future where these crises don't repeat themselves. I presented a clay pipe alternative, Councilmembers Bon Giovanni and Lyons, and they immediately recognized the value in looking at that. It will be on an agenda shortly. These pipes have a 100-year warranty and may last centuries. No one wanted the current situation, but we can learn from it and do better. In the, in the end, Gilbert's about community. Respect, communication, and understanding will always get us farther than anger accusation. Together, we're going to fix this problem and preserve the town we all love. And you've invested a lot of time here already, and you will during the next communications from citizens, and I implore you to stay till the end of the meeting so you can hear more comments from this council on ways to move forward. Because if you leave, you won't hear some of the things that we decide that we need to move forward on or some of the questions we need answered. So please stay. Thank you for putting up with my diatribe.
Thank you. Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I've always believed in my life, in my business, that if you make a mistake, that's fine, but you have to own it. And by owning it means you get better from it and you don't do it again. Personally, the launch of our billing system, I can't call it a catastrophe because that would be an insult to every real catastrophe. It wasn't done appropriately, and I wished we were able to do it differently. And I hope in the future, when we roll out something, it's done differently. When you spoke about reasons for bills spiking, I have a personal story, which I'll talk first for, in a minute. But you mentioned broken, possible broken meter, leaks, overwatering, billing for two months, and there's a possibility of all four of those things happening. So that's five different variables. You've got to trust my math on this one. Four times, three times, two times, one plus one, there are 25 different combinations for having a high spiking bill. It isn't just one thing. If you see your bill spike, you know, 60,000 gallons, you can't automatically say, my new meter's broken, or this is broken, because it could be a combination. For example, my bill prior to the raises were about, was about $180 a month. I have an acre property. Now, mind you, half an acre, I have fake lawn in it because I don't like mowing my lawn. I have a 30,000 gallon pool, a 16,000 gallon pond, and 200 tropical bamboo trees that are 30 feet tall. When the changes came, my bill went to 260. It's an $80 increase. Okay, I understood why we had to do all that. You know, matter of fact, look at that pipe right there. That's one of our pipes that exploded. So I was okay with the $80 increase because I knew about it and, and understood it. Two months later, my bill went to 850. I lost my mind. I called the town. Now, the guy who came out didn't even know I was a council member, so I don't want to hear any kind of special treatment thing going on. But turns out, I had a broken meter, but it was 20 years old. At some point, these things are going to break. So I also found out I had 24 leaks in my yard. I fixed the leaks, got the new meter, gave the watering schedule that the town gave to me, to my landscaper, who fixed all my timing, and I'm back down to about 280 right now. The town did an incredible job investigating the situation. Recently, there's been, of course, a lot of complaints. I've asked people to email me. I've gotten probably 10 different residents emailing me with the issues. I've turned them over to the town. They've either been resolved or they're currently working on them now. One thing that you didn't mention in the presentation was, we had about 15 years of not raising our rates. For whatever reason, maybe the seven people that were up here 15 years ago didn't want to raise rates for whatever reason. When you don't raise rates for 15 years, bills don't just, you know, disappear. You know, your water doesn't just appear when you turn on the faucet. So we were tasked with making a responsible decision, not an easy one. We could have easily said, we're not going to raise rates, guys. Let's kick the can down another two years. At some point in time, we have to be responsible to make sure that we deliver the services that we promised the citizens. Does it suck? It sucks. It, it, it really does. Another thing I want to clarify, if this council in the future agrees to a 25% raise or whatever raise, that isn't a 25% raise on your whole bill. It's 25% raise on the water part of it, okay? And I want to address one more thing, and that's developers. Because I, I've heard many, many comments, why don't you charge the developers? Why are you charging the citizens? We have, if not, the highest system development fees in this whole metropolitan area. What that means is before a builder builds a house, he pays us money for water, sewer, and those kinds of things. Now, I'm going to isolate it just to water and sewer. They pay us for police, parks, all those public, I mean, all that stuff. Just water and sewer in the, the bill that you're looking at right now. When a developer builds a house, they pay the town approximately $21,000 to pay us for our infrastructure. When they build an apartment, they pay us about $14,000 on average per apartment door. When I hear people make accusations about developers, they are more than paying for the infrastructure. If you look at a neighborhood with 1,000 homes in it, you know, I'm not doing the math really quick in my head, but that's probably, I don't know, 40, 40 million, 4 million, whatever. They are paying for those system development fees. And that's before the resident moves in and starts paying his or her own bill on top of it. I would love to see, I'm glad that we are moving forward, you know, with an audit. I'm glad that we're moving forward with hiring people temporarily so we can get out there and service more people that are now calling with concerns. I can tell you that I was very happy with what the town did in my house when I called. And again, they didn't even know I was a council member. Does our software that we have now, that, the meter software, you mentioned that it alerts us if it's seeing a, a spike, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, it will be able to notify us of high consumption, which would be a spike or an increase, an abnormal increase in consumption. I'm not sure exactly what the criteria are for that, but it will also notify us of continuous consumption, which is constant running of the meter.
Okay. And I know we can't do any motions tonight at all, but what I would like to, what I would like to see is at least for 90 days, we take some responsibility also. If we see a spike in a neighbor's, in one of our residents' homes, why wait two months for them to call us? I would love to be able to say, hey, we, call them on the phone. We noticed a high spike. We noticed 40,000 more gallons than usual, you know? Can we send someone out? Can we make an appointment to send someone out? Again, I know we're not making any motions, but I would love for us to consider that in the future, maybe in a short period of time, 90 days, until we get our hands around all this.
Mayor, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, that is, I'll say, a service or a function that our team did with the old system constantly. Anytime we saw those types of alerts, we'd do that. And we will start doing that again as soon as we have that available to us in the new system. In the meantime, we're looking at ways that we can manually do that to, it's, you know, a much more time-consuming process, so we may not be able to get all of them, but we're trying to figure out how we can do that in the interim. But we absolutely, that's not, that's not like a, a term-limited thing. That's something we do forever. Absolutely.
Because I have a feeling my, my fellow colleagues up here would be okay somehow contingency money, somehow finding the money to, to take care of that for a, a short period of time or, you know, in the, in the future. I, I'd rather have us be proactive than sit in a room with a bunch of people that are concerned that their bill has gone up immensely and it took them two months for them to really put it all together. I'd rather be proactive and call them right away and say, let's send someone over. So again, I know we can't make any motions tonight, but I would like to see that in the future. And I, I want to thank, I know the, the town staff, the water department right now is under a lot of stress, and I want to thank them all for what they're doing, and I'm glad we're, we're going to be hiring some more temporary people to get on the phones and answer some of these questions and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just have one thing I, I'd like you to explain one more time, just for clarity, because we're talking about, when we talk about failures with the meters or the AMI, would you explain the difference between the AMI and the meter itself and where the problem may be?
Sure. The, the meter itself is what the water is flowing through and what is registering and recording the consumption that's happening. The AMI portion is the radio that's connected to the meter that just sends the read from the meter to our, to our system. Our old meter reading system was what we call touch read, so we would have to go to every single meter and use a little wand and touch a puck on the top of the meter lid, and it would upload same data to our system. The AMI system just makes that automated, and then it gives us the continuous usage versus only getting all of that information once a month. So you have 90,000 meters in the system, we have 52-plus thousand AMI radios. A lot of those AMI radios are on older meters, but all of the new meters are also having the AMI radios installed. So we had one come up the other day where the AMI radio was installed in October of 2024. The meter itself was from 2011. It's one of the ones that we investigated that Councilmember Bon Giovanni had sent over to us. So, does that answer?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Council, and thank you, Jessica, for the presentation and to your staff for all the preparation. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and move to communications from citizens, the first portion. Vice Mayor.
Hello. Whoops. Hello, everyone. We're happy, believe it or not, to see you here and hopefully hear your comments. And, and as you can see, we're doing lots of, lots of hard work to try and get all of this worked out. So the first, well, for, I'll start off with reading the rules of decorum, and if you guys would please, you know, listen and pay attention because it's very important information. So the, the Gilbert Town Council values citizen comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a request sheet, a request to speak card for each item they wish to speak on and submit it to the town clerk or place it in the bin provided prior to the start of the meeting. The communications from citizens portion of the agenda provides citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to town government. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them. And at the conclusion of the open call to public, response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have, sorry, I'm sorry. So it's a new form, so. Criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. In accordance with town code, each speaker is limited to three minutes. Priority will be given to Gilbert residents, business owners, and property owners. Public comment will be limited to 30 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, so we'll be doing a 30-minute period, and we'll get through whatever we get through in 30 minutes, and then the balance of the residents wanting to speak will speak at the end of the meeting. Public comments will, will be limited to 30 minutes total at the beginning of the meeting. The town clerk will notice the council once the 30-minute limit has been reached. If additional comments remain, they will be heard after the conclusion of the public hearing with the same three-minute limit per speaker. While people cannot donate their time to others, they can designate a person to speak on behalf of a group of people. The town asks that when you name, when your name is called, you come forward to the podium. Be sure and state your name and your place of residence, and then begin speaking. All speakers are expected. of residence, and then begin speaking. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal attacks, political speech, or threats of political action are inappropriate in this forum and will be grounds at the discretion of the mayor for ending a speaker's time at the podium. We truly value your engagement and public participation in our town council meetings. For those here specifically related to water and utility rates and are looking to troubleshoot potential discrepancies, we currently have customer service force staff on site in the tower room located directly outside the council chambers. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, if I may, the designation for a group member is part of our old code, so that's not in our current code, but council can suspend the rules if they want to do that. It's just not part of our code as written.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, our first speaker will be Eddie Cook. If you could come down to the podium, you will have, state your name and your city, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Mayor Anderson, council members, hi. My name is Eddie Cook. I've been a resident here in Gilbert since 1986. I just wanted to share real briefly here. When I was on the council, there was a Resolution 4026, which was something that I worked on from 2017 to 2018, which was called the Policy of Civility. And back at that time, there was some contention with, you know, residents in the council. But through that, I worked hard with stakeholders about how the interaction of council and with the public in the policy of civility, where we respect everyone's voice, and everyone's voice was heard, and that we should be able to agree to disagree respectfully. So I just share that with you as the beginning of this. I wanted to share a little bit about a comment, just to clarify, Councilmember Bon Jivani, that, you know, 15 years ago, you know, why didn't we not raise any rates? Well, we did have one rate increase, which I believe was sewer. But the issue for us back then was to create a economic engine where the robustness of our businesses, as they were successful, would eliminate the need to increase anything, from taxes to race or whatever. And that was really the focus of the town of Gilbert, as we saw the redevelopment of the downtown. And Councilmember Torgerson was part of the RDC and understood that what it was, you know, 15 years ago is not like it's today. It is a economic engine. The Santan Mall, something that was very important for the council, because we've seen many malls collapse during that time, Fiesta Mall, you know, Tri-City Mall, Metro Center. And then we didn't want that to happen. So the focus was that we wanted to keep that mall alive and running, because it was an economic engine. Also bringing in wonderful businesses to the Rivellon Project, Class A office spaces, where commercial was an ongoing amount of revenue. So that was some of the things that was important for us. But I served eight years on AMWA, as you know, that are very, very important as it relates to water in the region. And water is literally the most important resource for the town of Gilbert. In fact, it's the most important resource in any community. Without water, we can't live. Without water, we can't have our businesses. And in 2014, when I sat there in Adias and we were given a presentation about our infrastructure, it began a process where we were now data-driven, asking staff to provide all the information that we needed to do to start that process of protecting our water. And in 2018, you began to see the first CIP projects focused on water. And for you folks, COVID put a stop to a lot of that, as you know. The price of goods and services, supply chains were detrimentally hurt. So that was unseen for all of you here on the council. And you have to make decisions based upon today's economy, inflation rates and so forth. And the cost of water delivery from SRP and CAP and how we drill for groundwater, which are the three sources that Gilbert uses, again, that all costs money. And again, that's the most important resource in Gilbert, and we can't live without it, but we have to pay for that. So I thank you all for making the right decisions for our community. I'm also a property owner that has suffered through the increases as well. I'll be calling the town of Gilbert to have them explore my water meter as well. But again, I just want to share and thank you for having the courage to take on this very difficult issue. Every council has their moments in the past. But again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Chevelli, I didn't see a timer there. Was it, is it there? Okay. All right. I just wanted to double-check that.
Yes, the timers for the individual, I'm keeping the 30 minutes separately.
Oh, okay. Okay. But they have three minutes to speak. I didn't see the, we used to see the three minutes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure we don't have any issues or anything. Okay, so our next speaker is Barbara Colvin.
Hello. My name is Barbara Colvin, and I live in Santan Rant in Gilbert. And I couldn't help be irritated with the comments about, "Reach out to us, reach out to us." And everybody keeps saying, "Reach out to us." I called Town of Gilbert General Administration to find out when this meeting was going to be. I made three phone calls, and every single phone call, it ended with, "Press this for that, press this for that," and then I do that. I got disconnected all three times. It was very frustrating. I went on your website. It was very frustrating. It was not easy to find where this meeting was going to be held. So I ended up calling somebody in the water department, and she had a difficult time getting a hold or finding where the meeting was going to be on the website. So that being said, you need to improve a little bit more on the receiving of the reaching out. I feel like the citizens of Gilbert have been victimized because of the poor decisions that were made. Yes, you might not have had all of the information available to you, but to expect all the residents to take on this massive increase in their bills at one shot, yes, you say you spend it out. By the time, when I moved to Gilbert, my water bill was $89. That included the whole thing, water, sewer, and refuse. I checked my water bill this past month. My water usage is $12. The cost for my water usage is $12. When the individual was showing her slides, you know, my bill now is $152 a month. I'm a single-person household. That shouldn't be. I don't do laundry every day. I don't wash dishes every day. So I don't know how many increases you think the average residents can absorb, because Gilbert is not the only one that is raising our rates. SRP is raising theirs November 1st. Salt River Project, or Southwest Gas, and the rest of them are going to be following right behind them. Guarantee, the salaries are not going up. I don't have a salary. I have a retirement pension. I am 73 years old, and I'm going to be forced to go back to work in order to pay the increases on every single one of my bills that are necessary to live on. That's not frivolities, vacations, big properties, all of this. That is not that. So I guess I have to stop talking now? I'm not done.
Please, please, please hold your applause. Applause is not, is not decorum, and please hold that. Please do not applaud.
And I also did have, I also did have a check on my, Gilbert came out, and then he checked mine, because unbeknownst to keeping in contact, when they see a spike in a customer's thing, my bill went up to $182, and I about had a cow. And I called, and somebody did come out, and we checked it. We troubleshooted it. It ended up being nothing in the system, but it was a float that was malfunctioning. So my yard is desert landscape, so I don't use a lot of this. So...
But that, and your, your time has expired. I'm sorry.
I know. Where can I continue to give this information? Because a lot of the things that Hamel quoted, I have to say this one thing. Even though Gilbert Water meets the definition of affordability, we realize many customers in Gilbert are still struggling to keep up with rising costs. Where is she determining that Gilbert's water rates are in the affordability column? Okay, so now you can tell me where I can send the rest of my issues.
Okay. Patrick?
Mayor, if she would like to leave it with one of our clerks towards the back of the room, we'll make sure and give her information where she can send that to.
Well, I hope it was better than the one that I met on the way in this morning, this evening. They couldn't, they couldn't tell me what form to even fill out to speak.
Okay, if, if you continue to disrupt the speakers, then we're gonna, the mayor will have to address you and do whatever he needs to do. We need to keep decorum in here. We're happy, we're happy to have you here.
Staff, can we also have someone inform Barbara about our rebate program for people who qualify?
Excuse me, Chuck?
Sorry. I thought you were done, Bobby.
Okay. Yeah, if you, please, please help us, and we have respect for you, and please have respect for the decorum in the council. So the next speaker, and you will have three minutes to speak. And I hate to interrupt people when they're speaking, but when the, when you see the buzzer go off at three minutes, there's lots of people that want to speak in here. And when you overspeak that, you're taking away some of, you know, the time and ability. So the next speaker is Amy, and Amy, be, if you could come up. Thank you.
Thank you for having us here to listen. My name's Amy Bajaroni. I live in Logos Asantia, right across the street in Gilbert, and I've lived here since 2023, from Chandler originally, Philadelphia originally. But I'm here tonight, and I'm sure some of you saw my post I'm here, because like many residents, I am impacted by serious issues with the town's water meter system. I did actually call the town, and I did have somebody come out, and her name was Tony. He was fantastic. He first identified the fact that my radio transmitter was not configured properly. It was reading four digits instead of seven digits. He said that that would cause incorrect multipliers. Well, that radio meter was installed back in, or the radio for the meter was installed in December of 2024. Now, mind you, your rates in Gilbert for the water had not gone up that much, and there were other issues with my meter. So I had no idea. I just paid the bill, thought maybe it was like carryover in December or January, and continued to pay it. And I did not even realize how bad it got until I got a bill for 75,000 gallons of water. And I want you guys to take a minute to think about this. My home, I have about an eighth of an acre, and I have a little bit of grass on front of my eighth of an acre. I do have a pool in the back, 15,000 gallons that I do keep very well-maintained. But for an eighth of an acre, right, with two people, there is no possible way I am possibly using 75,000 gallons. So when he told me that, you know what, your radio is misconfigured, probably on factory reset, how many others have factory reset meters, right? I called the town up, and I'm excited. I'm like, yay, they're gonna fix something. The message I got from the town was, "We escalated to supervisors, and we are not going to do anything for you. We are not going to adjust your bill. This is your water." He said that you water a lot, right, based on the rate. He's not looking at how many gallons per minute. He's just looking at, like, what the chart says. And because you changed your billing system, and I work in software, so I'm very, very well aware of the fact that it does not cost a lot to keep up an old EMR system or an old system to just give access to the bills. I can't even go back to look at what my bills are. I have no ability to do that, because that was taken away, and we got four days' notice to take it away. And I remember actually trying to pay. So.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, our next speaker will, please, our next speaker will be Frank. Commander Frank?
We're not here for the, about the water bill. We're here about the American Legion and the proposed project here that's going on. So a little history on our post. Our post was built in the 1950s by hand by the American Legion. You might notice there's two names, because we had a sheriff that didn't quite care for us. So he put his name on the post, and he allowed us to build the post. With that being said, the Legion guys made that decision because the Korean War was going on, and we needed to get our vets in there, because they knew coming home, because they were World One vets, World Two vets, know how important that legion was. Their sons and grandsons and daughters wouldn't face the suicide that could happen if they don't have that association. So the current plans that the town has of building the road 20 feet from my post, and then also taking all the public parking from there, will result in my post basically ceasing to exist. 10 spaces, 1,000 members, is not possible my post to exist. You guys might realize, like, just recently, we're gonna have 100 children in the town of Gilbert have a Christmas this year, because of the money we raised from that post and using the little park next to us to help achieve that goal. We've raised over $6,900, $6,000 for the fire department so kids could have clothes and bags for schools. And we were the ones that put up the flags. We maintain those flags and also at the museum. All that will cease to exist, because I will not have the ability to fund these projects. And talk about redevelopment. We talk about planning and economic engines. I don't, I know I'm a nonprofit, and we don't economically, we provide tons of services to the community. When a police officer had cancer, we're the ones helping raise money for them. So I'd just like to leave it like this, that the post belongs to the veterans who built it, families who keep it alive in the community that it serves every day. Redevelopment should be built on the legacy, not area it. The current plan, I'm asking for the next meeting, a motion to stop this road. It will stop, it will put an end to my post. And we are the character of the American, of the, we are the town of Gilbert. We are the people in here. Like I said, we have 2,000 members in that little post, and we provide and do a lot for this town. And you can see here that the hats, the vests, these are just a small portion. I came out today to show our support and love for this place. And I can't tell you how many veterans that we've saved just recently.
Sorry. Thank, thank you. Mayor?
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Buckley?
I think you're out of order.
I think you're out of order for a second. I'm asking if I could interrupt to say one thing quickly, that Frank, please, when you take later, come to me, because I know that you lost a member in front of you, and I'd like to talk to you about that.
Okay. So the next speaker is Maureen Hoppy. You can come forward, state your name. Please state your name, the city you live in, and you have three minutes to speak. Are you here? Okay, all right.
My name is Maureen Hoppy, and I'm a resident of Gilbert. I want to emphasize that anyone that may be identified in my statements tonight are presumed innocent until proven guilty. Two years...
My name is Maureen Hoppy, and I'm a resident of Gilbert. I want to emphasize that anyone that may be identified in my statements tonight are presumed innocent until proven guilty. Two years ago, several ethics complaints were filed alleging misconduct by multiple council members. Council neither accepted nor rejected the results of the subsequent investigations, some council members expressing concerns about the conduct and adequacy of those investigations, and believing that important information had been overlooked. Current council members that were the subject of these complaints were council members Buckley, Bon Giovanni, Torgason, Mayor Anderson. Since filing my initial complaint, myself and others have had our personal information released by council members and the town attorney. They've been stalked, harassed, and have been repeatedly threatened with legal and criminal action by certain council members and their supporters. Attempts to make reports to the Gilbert Police or to obtain any form of protection has been met with significant resistance. I recently obtained an email dated Friday, February, I'm sorry, Friday, April 14, 2023, at 26:00 AM, sent by Town Attorney Chris Payne to Andrew McGuire, outside counsel for the town of Gilbert. The email references statements of fact and other information related to allegations of threats made against Gilbert landowner Jeff Cooley by members of council, specifically Councilmember Jim Torgason. It also includes a summary of conversations and statements provided to Chris Payne by Mayor Scott Anderson, former Mayor Bridget Peterson, Kyle Maris, Vacutro, Veronica Gonzalez, and others. This email and many of the records and evidence that it references were deliberately withheld from the public, several media outlets, investigators, other members of the council. Additional evidence suggests a conspiracy by town officials, including the town attorney, to willfully and deliberately withhold records from the public, particularly those that contain defamatory information about the town, expose possible misconduct of town officials. I am alleging widespread corruption and gross misconduct of Gilbert town officials and members of the town council, a conspiracy to cover up and conceal public records, and evidence of misconduct from investigators, the media, and the public, and a coordinated effort by town officials to use the full power of the town's taxpayer-funded resources to harass, intimidate, and retaliate against outspoken residents. I have filed additional complaints and provided these and other records to state agencies for investigation. I am demanding an independent investigation into all facets of the town of Gilbert, and I am asking the residents of this community to stand with me and demand transparency and accountability. Town officials have violated our rights to free speech and to petition our government for redress, and we have had enough of their antics. There is much more to be revealed to both the public and investigators, and additional disclosures are forthcoming. The tyrannical conduct of this council must end now. It's time to stand up and hold these bullies accountable for the demise of our town.
Okay, our next speaker is Red Thomas.
Red Thomas, Gilbert. Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, the current plan strikes me as the death knell of our legion post as an institution here in Gilbert. Without adequate parking, and it and our service to Gilbert will just fade away like General MacArthur's speech about old soldiers. What I see here is a reasonable solution, a tale of two buildings. On one hand, our legion post is supported by 2,000 very active members and is operating 14 hours a day, seven days a week, while the Chamber of Commerce building with 620 members only managed to schedule something like 15 days this month, and only for a few hours at a time. And I'm also wondering, who pays to heat cool that giant building year round when it's empty? It seems like it would be best if we put the busiest group in the largest building with adequate parking, with it, with additional gathering places commensurate with the group's activity. What if the city were to lease the current chamber building to the legion for a dollar a year for as long as the legion is viable? The chamber might rent space for their meetings, like a party, or use a restaurant's overflow room like every other chamber does across the country. The old legion building could be sold to fund the renovation. That would allow the current building, the legion building, to be purchased by a business entity that would provide additional tax revenue and jobs for the community. That's all, folks.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, our next speaker is Timothy Rohn.
Good evening. My name is Timothy Rohn. I've been a resident of Gilbert for 10 years. Some of the questions I'm going to ask may seem rhetorical, but they are questions that not only myself, but we need answers to. Back in April, I was interviewed by Channel 3, Easter Sunday, actually, about the proposed rate increases. And I expressed my concerns then. I'll express them again now. While I understand that the infrastructure, the damaged pipes and so forth are probably one of the main reasons for the increase, how long did we know about those issues? I remember reading an article where there was a picture of a pipe in 2016 and a pipe in 2024. How often are those inspections done? Eight-year gap? If this was known to be an issue sooner, then maybe we wouldn't be here tonight, or maybe in a different circumstance. What's the expectancy of the pipes? One of the councilmen mentioned something about 100-year warranty. Has the vendor for those pipes taken responsibility for this issue now? Are they going to be held as accountable as you will be? I think that's the largest issue with this rate increase is usage. And I know I speak for a number of people who've already spoken, and I'm sorry if I'm gonna be repetitive. It's noted that there have been meter calibration issues, which means the Q and A from the vendor is flawed, sort of been called out. Why aren't we inspecting all meters? Not just the ones in question? Because where there's, they're like roaches. Where there's one, there's many. It's not an isolated issue. You have to understand that. I need to also understand how myself, my wife, and my two children are gone for three weeks out of a month, yet our usage is 9,000 gallons. How? I have no leak. I followed the protocol that the young lady put up on the screen. I have no leak. I've called the town of Gilbert. They're gonna come and look at it. No leak. I have a 300 to 400 square foot patch of grass in my yard that gets watered five minutes a day. One time I was told I used 435 gallons of water a day in the last billing cycle. Billing cycles need to be more average. There shouldn't be a big swing between 28 and 35 days. All the meters need to be checked, as I said. Lastly, does anyone on the council oversee the IT department? If so, who? Anyone? Bueller? No. Whoever runs the IT department needs to be fired. This rollout is an abomination. Someone already mentioned that we cannot get copies of historical bills at all. Uh, one more second. Retention policy needs to be followed, and whoever runs the IT department needs to understand the first process of any rollout or implementation or conversion is historical dated data retention. We can't get historical bills, and that's an issue. So it's broken. Fix it.
All right, we have time for one more speaker. And if the speaker would please abide by the timeframe, that'll be the end of our 30-minute beginning. And our next speaker is Nancy Stipp.
Hello, my name is Nancy Stipp. I'm a resident of Gilbert, Arizona. We've been here for 25 years. Some of you up there already know who I am, and a lot of you don't. But thank you for having me, and thank you for letting me speak. My bill was one of the worst, at 292,000 gallons of water for a 13,000-square-foot lot. I have a pool. Okay. I went to the town of Gilbert, asking first for assistance as to what could be done. I had had a new meter put in three weeks earlier. So it couldn't be the meter, because my, how could one be put in brand-new, and then the next one being put in? And we don't even know if they're working, really, because I don't have my bill yet for the end of, for the full 30 days. And I know that I think it's, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Bon Giovanni? I, I, I know that there's interactions back and forth on our Go Gilbert Facebook page, but I think the interaction has not been good. I think the interaction's more been rude, quite frankly, to the town of Gilbert and our people. My bill has been taken care of. I was one of the ones who they said, you owe nothing. Done with, that's it. I have no explanations. Nobody told me why. I appreciate it, sure, but my people here are not getting the same care that I got. I did email the town of Gilbert Utilities the day I got the bill. I am still waiting for them to respond to me. I did have Channel 3 and 12 News at my house within 48 hours. They did respond to me. And, and I know that some of you didn't like that I say I ran to the media. I didn't run anywhere. You forced somebody out of their house to go do something, because you're not doing anything. Over 100 days? Over 100 days, nothing has been done. And Mr. Mayor, I would like to address you properly when I say, with all due respect, and also Vice Mayor, this has been one of the most significant issues that has affected our town since the pandemic. And this has been complete, and you have been completely silent for months, 100 days, and you came out and made a statement to us, but the same statement that everybody hears. Meter, it's not their fault, we have leaking water. My 292,000 gallons of water was explained from the supervisor at the utility department. We asked, where did this water go? Because she was sure I used it. And she looked at my husband, and she said, oh, it went in the dirt, underground in the dirt. So underground in the dirt, I mean, A, my house would sink if it's just all below me, not to mention we have a basement home, so I would have noticed right away if my house was using 292,000 gallons of water. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, at this time, we will move into the consent agenda. That, that ends the beginning speakers, and we'll do the remaining speakers if you filled out a card in, at the end of the meeting. So I'm gonna begin, to begin the consent agenda, I am going to, Ashley, I believe Patrick, pass this time over to you. We've had several items pulled off the agenda to discuss. So Patrick, you're up.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm aware of the items that the request for additional clarification was placed on, so I think I, I should be able to explain everything without having to pull anything off. But if you would like to pull something off for additional conversation, please let me know that. Okay, again, we categorize our items into three, our three main areas of focus under the strong economy, prosperous community, exceptional built environment. Agenda item number four, Roosevelt Water Conservation District IGA for roadway improvements, it's a motion to adopt a resolution proving an IGA with RWCD for a project we've got at Hill Higley and Pecos intersection improvements. It'll relocate the existing RWCD facility outside of the planned roadway, and it will be funded through the Maricopa Association of Governments revolving fund. Agenda item number five is an IGA for joint law enforcement training. It's a motion to approve a resolution for an IGA between the City of Phoenix and the town of Gilbert for joint law enforcement training, or attending law enforcement training hosted by either party. There's no financial impacts, however, the town may receive funding from the City of Phoenix for their use of our facilities, which will be determined by a future MOU. Agenda item number six, maintenance repairs and operational supplies equipment. It's an, it's a motion to approve a cooperative agreement with Kimball Midwest for maintenance repairs and operational supplies, parts, equipments, and facilities for a yearly amount of $100,000 in a four-year period, not to exceed $400,000. It's funded out of the general fund from multiple departments. It's to maintain our facilities across the town. Agenda item number seven, the Public Safety Software Solutions Renewal Agreement. It's with VersaTerm Public Safety US for multiple fiscal years in an amount not to exceed just under 2.5 million for public safety software solutions. The services are the backbone of the, the software solutions used by our police department, include computer-aided dispatch, records management, victim notification, professional standards, online reporting, and laboratory information management systems. It's funded via the general fund and, and is included in the approved Fiscal 26 Police Operating Budget. Agenda item number eight, a sewer cleaning vehicle purchase contract and contingency request. I know that you received some additional information from this, from Public Works Director Jessica Marlowe. It's for an AquaStar sewer cleaning vehicle. The cost is about $868,000 for the purchase of a Kaiser Premier AquaStar sewer cleaning vehicle, and a motion to authorize a wastewater replacement fund contingency in the amount of $275,000, and the wastewater fund contingency in $218,000. These items are rate-supported through the Wastewater Operating Fund and Wastewater Replacement Fund contingency categories. And so that would be the, the rates that people pay for their sewer bill, go to pay for the equipment that maintains our system. Agenda item number nine, a cooperative contract with Brady Plus, utilizing the City of Tucson Cooperative, partnered with Omnia Partners, excuse me, to provide janitorial and sanitation supplies, equipment, and related services to the town of Gilbert. Contract fees do not exceed $220,000 annually. Contracts funded from the corresponding facilities and parks contracted maintenance accounts for each facility that requires these services. Agenda item number 10 is a motion to approve the contract with Veritiv Operating Company through the use of Sourcewell Cooperative to provide janitorial services to the town of Gilbert. Contract fee is not to exceed $150,000 annually. It'll be funded by, from the corresponding facilities contracted maintenance accounts for each facility that receives these services. Agenda item number 11, grounds maintenance equipment and vehicle purchase agreement. It's a motion to approve Mojave Cooperative purchasing contract to provide grounds maintenance equipment, tractors, and utility vehicles, parts, service materials, and our equipment, not to exceed $200,000 annually. It's funded by the general fund and is included in the approved Fiscal 26 Parks and Recreation Operation Budget. This is for me, uh, replacement of various vehicles that reach the end of their life or the parts to maintain the vehicles that are currently in our fleet within the Parks and Recreation Department. Agenda item number 12, the Light the World Giving Machine License Agreement. It's the annual agreement with the Church of Jesus Christ and Latter-day Saints to use a portion of town-owned property for the placement of vending machines, commencing on November 14th and terminating on January 2nd. This year, there is no financial impact to the town. Agenda item number 13, the Crossroads Park LED Lighting Purchasing Contract. It's a cooperative purchasing contract with Musco Sports Lighting, using Sourcewell to provide sports lighting solutions within related technology, equipment, and services, not to exceed $1.5 million. It's funded via the general fund, is included within the Fiscal Year 26 Parks and Recreation Operating, Operating Budget. Agenda item number 14, it's a contract with LDV Custom Specialty Vehicles for the purchase of a police command van, not to exceed $1 million over two fiscal years pending budget approval, and a motion to approve the Fiscal Year 26 General Fund contingency in the amount not to exceed $750,000 for the purchase of a police command van from LDV Custom Specialty Vehicles. The item was originally approved in Fiscal 25, however, was not able to be completed. The budgeted funds have been carried over into Fiscal 26. The remaining $250,000 has been approved in the Fiscal 26 budget, and will use the opioid settlement fund. settlement fund. And for your information, our previous command van was a 2003 model that reached the end of its, its useful life. We sold that vehicle at opt, at auction, so we do not, do not currently have a command van for our police vehicle. And this is our mobile unit that's on the scene for any major incidents, catastrophes or any needs we may have for having a presence on-scene for major insignificant events. Agenda item number 15, street striping contract. It's a motion to approve the street's contingency request in the amount of $128,000 and change. A motion to approve contract with Franklin Striping for pavement marking services in the amount of $754,000. This work is funded from the street marking maintenance budget. The current available budget for fiscal '26 is insufficient for the proposed contract. Therefore, the street's fund contingency in the amount of $128,008 is requested. The town previously did this work in-house, but now outsources it because we can save more money, they can do it more cost-effectively than we could do it in-house. Agenda item number 16, AV equipment and services contract. It's a motion to approve expenditures utilizing, utilizing contract with Ford Audiovisual Systems, Level 3 Audiovisual LLC and CCS Presentation Systems and with surveillance systems integration in the amount not to exceed $3 million for three fiscal years pending budget approval. It's covered under the Information Technology Department and annual capital expense. With this item, that does not mean we're going to spend $3 million. That is just the amount of authorization based on what our needs should be for replacement of AV systems, maintenance of AV systems. By also having four vendors to choose from, we also can select the vendor with the best technology at the best price for whatever our needs are. Previously, last year, we used the state contract for Level 3 and for a period of time, Level 3 was not on the state contract, which meant we didn't have access to an AV vendor for our needs. So this provides us with adequate coverage across four vendors over three years for whatever needs we may have that would come. Agenda item number 17, pre-construction services with Entellus for the CIP project Somerton Boulevard, Williamsfield Road to Recker, in a not-to-exceed amount for $184,000, and this is funded with the voter-approved 2022 general obligation bonds. I have, agenda item number 18 is a JOC task order for construction of a wall and pathway. This is for the Phoenix Avenue Pedestrian Mall project. It is being funded through the 2022 GO bonds in the amount of $1.16 million. And with Sunland, a contract with Sunland Asphalt Construction in the amount not to exceed $2.7, $217,000 million. This item's funded with those general obligation bonds, and this is the wall that will create separation between the Union Pacific Railroad tracks and our Heritage District along the southern boundary, as well as a walkway along that wall to create a safer traveling area for our general public. Agenda item number 19, a JOC task order for intersection improvements at the Higley and Pecos intersection with Talis Construction in an amount not to exceed $2.6 million and change. Again, this is funded with the 2022 general obligation bonds. Agenda item number 20, a task order for asphalt products and services with Talis Construction in an amount not to exceed $1,049,000 and change for fiscal year '26. This item is funded by the Streets Fog Seal Budget and Roadway Maintenance Administration Budget. This is how we maintain our asphalt streets year in and year out to maintain the performance and extend the life of that asset. Agenda item number 21, Free Stone Rec Center Flooring Replacing Contract. It's a contract with Advanced Health Styles Fitness Equipment, Inc., doing business as Advanced Exercise in accordance with state contract through the statewide sporting goods for the replacement of the sports flooring in the upstairs track and fitness area of Free Stone Recreation Center. It has reached the end of its useful life. This item is funded out of the general fund, is included in the approved fiscal '26 Parks and Recreation Operating Budget. Agenda item number 22, aquatic facilities chlorine suppliers contract renewal. It's a motion to approve a contract with Landmark Aquatics for Accutab Chlorine Supplies for the following locations, Mesquite Aquatic Center, Greenfield Pool, Williamsfield Pool, Perry Pool, Water Tower Plaza and Gilbert Regional Park and the Western Calamity Canal Amenities for Water Features. This item's funded out of the general fund, is not, does not require additional funds for renewal. Agenda item number 23, it's a motion to approve a change order to construction services under a JOC contract with Nesbit Contracting for CIP Project Number ST 2101 Bus Stop Shelter Replacements in amount not to exceed of $201,000. The funding for the proposed change order to, will utilize public transportation funds from Valley Metro and Arizona Lottery Funds as the designated funding sources. The increased cost to this came when we discovered there are four additional bus shelters we discovered with damage that need to be replaced in addition to the 33 other bus shelters that we are replacing because of damage. Agenda item number 24 is a road improvements change order, change order to AE Services Contract for, to Sustainable Engineering Group LLC in the, not to exceed amount of $111,000 and change for the CIP project Cooper Road baseline to Encinas, Encinas, and its funding source is the 2022 general obligation bonds. Cactus Yards Parking Lot Change Order. It's a change order for AE Services on the Cactus Yard Parking Lot Improvements with HR Green, the amount not to exceed of $12,359. That's to replace some additional ballards out there as, as well as a few lights, and this is funded through the general replacement fund. Agenda item number 26, Free Stone Recreation Center HVAC Change Order. It's a motion to approve a change order to the train contract. This change order increases the contract by $6,636 to cover preventative maintenance cost of a new HVAC unit at Free Stone Rec Center. The compensation under the agreement including this change order will be $180,259. It's funded out of the general fund. This is, we add it, we're adding an additional facility to this maintenance contract with this vendor. Agenda item number 27, time tracking system contract change order. It's a motion to approve a general fund contingency in the amount of $112,617. Approved change order number two, utilizing a contract with Tyler Technologies to support the implementation and licenses. Tyler time and attendance and advanced scheduling and suite of Tyler projects in the amount of just under 2.3 million for two fiscal years pending annual budget approval. Majority of the funding for these services has been allocated for in the fiscal '26 budget. Contingency request will come out of the general fund. This is to upgrade our system that handles the time and payroll services for the town of Gilbert. Agenda item number 28, general liability IBNR contingency funding. It's a contingency contract in, or a motion to approve a contingency request in the amount of $324,000 and change to approve, provide sufficient capacity for the fiscal '25 general liability incurred but not reported. The IBNR is an actuarial estimate of funds the town must reserve for future claim payments, serving as an accounting requirement to ensure sufficient reserves exist to cover all obligations if operations were to cease. To cover the increased IBNR for fiscal '25, the existing balance in the general liability fund will be used plus fiscal '26 contingency totaling $324,700 and will be required from funds specific to the department. Agenda item number 29, grant acceptance from the Gila River Indian Community. It's a motion to authorize the acceptance of a 12% gaming contributions grant from the Gila River Indian Community in a total amount of $45,936 and approved grant fund contingents, contingency in the amount of $45,936 for the following three items, Town of Gilbert-Namie Contract in the amount of $15,936, Town of Gilbert Park Ranger Contract in the amount of $5,000, and Women's Health Innovations of Arizona Contract in the amount of $25,000. Grant fund contingency is required to authorize expenditures, however, this amount will be fully offset by the revenue received from GRIC, resulting in no net fiscal impact to the town. Agenda item number 30 is the Public Works Advisory Board Meeting Minutes. It's a motion to consider approval of the meeting minutes of the special joint meeting with the Public Works Advisory Board, September 3rd, 2025, special meeting of September 8th, 2025, study session of September 9th, 2025, and a regular meeting of September 9th, 2025, a special meeting of September 22nd, 2025. And with that, that concludes the consent agenda for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Does anyone have any questions or want anything pulled off?
I'd just like to make a couple.
Councilmember Torgerson?
First, I just wanted to make a comment on item 12, the, the giving machines. This is something that is very Gilbert. It is something that the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints puts out where you're buying a gift for somebody you don't know. It's, it's a charity and it's, it's giving, as they call it, a giving machine, but it is something unique and it is something that is very community-oriented. I implore everybody to at least look at that. If you can't afford to give, you can't afford to give, but if you can, you do. And my only question, and it is rhetorical, but I need to hear you say it. I am always stunned at the cost of a command unit in number 14. I find disbelief in it, and I know that it is my cognitive dissonance, but please just explain that very quickly because it's a very big pill to swallow.
Mayor, Councilmember Torgerson, Police Chief Michael Sorbroke's coming to the mic. Can he explain to you more about the technology in that vehicle and why it costs that much?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Anderson and Councilmember Torgerson. It's more than, more than the vehicle. This command van vehicle, as mentioned, the prior one was 23 years old, 22 years old, and we, it was out of service, continuously breaking down. The priority for this command van is utilizing, bringing it to an incident, it could be a homicide scene, it could be a natural disaster. It should provide us with resources on scene, video technology, the camera systems, a place where we can download evidence, interview individuals involved in those incidents, have a bathroom break rather than having to drive away or borrow a residential bathroom if that's available. So it's a, not a convenience, it's a necessity, and we made the best we could out of that last resource that we had, like I said, for over 20 years. This was budgeted in FY '25. We initially thought we could get it for $750,000, but then with cost increases over the last three years, once we finally got to where we were pricing it out, it was coming in over, well over $800, $800,000. The current quote we received is just over $860,000, but we have some contingency in there if there's something unforeseen as we actually build it, and it'll still take about 12, 18 months to build it, but this will lock us into that price. So it is very expensive, like large apparatus-type vehicles, but it's not just the vehicle that we're purchasing, it's the equipment that goes with it and the maintenance and the warranties that go with that equipment to make sure we can properly handle investigations.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chief. Does anyone else have any questions or want anything pulled off? Okay, with that, I will move to approve the consent agenda, items number four through 30. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. And with that, we have, yeah, we need to vote. Oops. Okay, so we have a 7-0 vote, and that will end the consent agenda, and I will now turn this over to Mayor Anderson for the public hearing section of the meeting.
Thank you. Before we start the public hearings, I've had a request to have a five-minute bio-break, so would you like to take a break?
I'm good with that. So let's have a five-minute break.
We'll reconvene in five minutes. This is a two-minute warning. We'll start in two minutes. If everybody could have a seat and get settled, we'll start again. We'll start back with our public hearings. And we have a block of items. And normally we like to have one public hearing for all the items unless you want one taken off. I know that item thirty-six will be taken off for separate consideration. Are there any others? I'd like to keep the others all in a block and vote all of them at once if we can. Unless you...
Are we having a presentation?
We will eventually. I want to vote on the, everything else first. If...
I want a discussion on thirty-five.
You want, you want some discussion on thirty-five? Okay.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-five and thirty-six. So can I have a motion for the other items in the public hearings? I'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve three-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. All in favor, please indicate. Vice Mayor, your vote.
I don't know what...
There we go. Motion carries seven-zero. We'll move to item thirty-five, general plan, GP twenty-four oh-eight, zoning Z twenty-four dash twenty, aura at Santan. Staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item is GP twenty-four oh-eight and Z twenty-four twenty, aura Santan. This was brought before council in August of this year and then continued to tonight to allow the applicant some additional time to revise their plans. So I'll run through my presentation fairly quickly, but feel free to interrupt me if you've got any questions as I go along. GP twenty-four oh-eight is a general plan amendment request on fourteen point two-four acres. It's located at the southeast, it's located southeast of the southeast corner of Valvista and Pecos Road. The request with the general plan amendment is to amend the general plan land use designation from regional commercial to residential twenty-five to fifty dwelling units per acre. The companions zoning case, Z twenty-four twenty, is on that same fourteen point two-four acres, which requests to rezone the site from regional commercial zoning district with a PAD to mixed-use large, also with a PAD. So for context of the area, this is the aerial photograph. Again, this is off of Market Street, north of the Santan Freeway, and then south and east of Pecos and Valvista roads, behind the novel multifamily development in the VA hospital. Looking at the land use classification, the area is largely general commercial designation on the land use plan, anticipating commercial-type uses in the area. The novel project, a few years back, changed the portion here that you can see in orange just northwest of the site to residential. And then looking at the zoning map, we see the same pattern of development. The property is zoned regional commercial, as is much of that purple area. Multifamily high is located just northwest. So the applicant is seeking to rezone. This property and amend the general plan. Just for some brief context of the area, this Valvista Square Development Plan, which is what they're looking to amend, was originally developed in 2012, showing this mixed-use project that did anticipate multifamily in the area, as well as a variety of commercial uses. So this was that original plan. And then in 2019, when novel came forward, a revised development plan was provided on site to allow for that multifamily development and then changed what could potentially be developed on the subject site. The applicant proposal, again, seeks to rezone the property to mixed-use large and change the general plan designation to allow a density, a residential density of twenty-five to fifty dwelling units per acre. At the August council hearing, the proposal included three-hundred-and-fifty-seven units. There was ten thousand square feet of office within building one, five thousand square feet of office within building three, and then it ranged from three to four stories in height. So this shows the location of that office space that was proposed back in August. At the direction of council, the applicant went back and took another look to see if they could add more non-residential use to the site. So the updated proposal includes that same three-hundred-and-fifty-seven units. There was no change in the, in the unit count. But they were able to increase the building one office space, which is the office at the southwest portion of the site, to twenty-nine thousand square feet roughly, which was an increase of eighteen thousand square feet. The building three office space increased by five-hundred-and-fifty square feet. So there was quite a bit of work that the applicant did to increase that. And how they accomplished that was by removing the residential garages on the ground floor of building one, which allowed them to expand that commercial space on the ground floor of that specific building. What that did, so I had mentioned back in August that there were a couple of deviation requests that they were seeking. This change did add an additional deviation request. Our code does require that they provide, twenty-five percent of their covered spaces have to be enclosed, which requires ninety space, ninety enclosed garage parking spaces. So they've added a deviation to reduce that from ninety down to fifty-four in order to increase the commercial at the ground level of that building. In terms of the deviation request for the non-commercial use that would be required as part of mixed-use large, the code requires twenty percent. By them increasing, they are now requesting a reduction from twenty percent to seven-point-five. The previous request was three-point-four-nine percent. So they have increased the amount of office space or, or non-residential space that they're providing, but it is still a deviation from our, our land development code. I had shared this previously, but just some other context for the area. This is within our central two-oh-two core growth area, which does anticipate residential multifamily within this area. There is a high concentration of multifamily in this area. So when the applicant first approached us to do a multifamily development here, we did encourage them to consider our mixed-use zoning district, primarily because as we continue to grow, as we continue to reach build-out, we know that retaining those non-residential uses are of importance. We have twenty, seventy-point-eight-six percent of our community is residential land uses. And so our goal is always to retain as much of that non-residential use as we can. And so staff doesn't feel that this is in compliance with the land development code. And, and we aren't supportive of the significant deviation that they're proposing. But I do also want to point out that the applicant has reached back out to the chamber, provided an updated presentation of what they're proposing to the chamber. Previously, the chamber was not in support, but given the increased office that they were able to provide, the chamber is now in support of the project as well. So staff, if, if council does wish to approve this project, we have provided conditions in your packet, A through X, that would be included in the motion. Staff's recommendation, again, is not to support the project based on the significant deviation from the land development code. But I will also share with you that Planning Commission did recommend approval of the project. So happy to answer any questions you have. I know the applicant has a presentation as well.
Any questions?
No que... Oh, can I talk?
Vice Mayor.
Okay. No, no questions, actually. Did you just say that staff does not recommend this project, but Planning Commission did?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Mayor and Council, Adam Baugh, twenty-five, twenty-five East Arizona, bit more circle. You've seen this before, and I thought about just jumping right to the conclusion, what we've done. But given the size of the audience, I think it's helpful to tell the story, especially what it takes to get to this point today. Our property is the area in red, and it's surrounded by a retention basin, a Wincow, a novel apartments, and a couple hotels, and a VA clinic. And when you look at this site, it's zoned RC. RC allows lofts above commercial. But what's interesting here is this got its original zoning in nineteen-ninety-nine. And the question that got asked off was why, since nineteen-ninety-nine, has it still sat empty when everything else around it has been built out? What's interesting is in two thousand and four, the owners and developers of Kirland Commons wanted to replicate that success of Scottsdale and do that down here in Gilbert. And they created a zoning plan that was approved by the city council, town council, called Main Street Commons. Main Street Commons was trying to do what Kirland did up in Scottsdale, which was residential above commercial. And to do that, they had to have a different street layout. But unfortunately, what happened is, and the reason why I have these red boxes on there, is this shows you the staff report from two thousand and four, which talks about future residential uses proposed. But unfortunately, the thing that they couldn't control was the Great Recession of two thousand and seven, two thousand and thirteen. And the consequence of that was an unpredictable scenario where the ownership of this project and all the parcels around there were broken up into distressed parcels. I will cut, little past this slide for the sake of time. The question you want, I want to sort of answer is if it's already zoned RC today, that allows residential above commercial, why am I changing it to mixed-use? There's a couple of impacts. I think this really helps tell the story. And by the end, I hope you'll be able to see the wisdom of what we're proposing. The first impact is the competition between Santan Village and Main Street Commons. This is the era of two thousand and four. And both were competing for outdoor malls. And really, it's hard to do that in such close proximity to each other and still have enough tenants to fill both projects. And some tenants were jumping from one to the other. And the reality was Santan Village got a better and a quicker head start and a better tenant profile and was able to anchor through and ride out the recession. The unfortunate part for Main Street Commons is they put in the roadwork, but they were slower than the yellow box. And because they were slower, they got hung up with the recession. So even though they started putting the infrastructure and the roadway alignments, the recession occurred, the project stalled, it was broken up into individual pieces with a variety of different owners. And what was one plan, replicating Scottsdale, Kirland Commons, became really a series of about twelve or so different parcels owned by different people, all competing for whatever they could do with their piece. As a result, there was no more project, that vision that was uniform, and it was really a failed project. The problem, though, with that failed project is this next slide here. This is the roadway network. And I don't think people would have designed the roadway this way, which is this red line, had they not planned for a larger congruous uniform project. The unfortunate part is while they couldn't predict the recession, they did, they got a head start in putting that roadway in. The difference is, when you turn up Valvista Road and make a right on Market Street right by the VA clinic, very few cars travel... by the VA clinic, very few cars travel that line in red. It seems to be that the commercial shopping pattern is to go up Valvista Drive and turn right on Pecos. And as you turn right on Pecos, you have a very different experience. And the reason why this matters, those two circles, is circle number three is the city's traffic data. This isn't from our own reports. This is just pulling the city's traffic counts. And the difference at that red dot there is about 630 to 850% more trips during the peak time on Pecos Road than that little dot on the bottom, which is on Market Street. Just to give you some perspective, if I could break this down into minutes, there's 29 cars a minute on Pecos Road, and there's barely three on Market Street, which tells you Market Street is not a road that's being traveled for retail uses. And I think the outcome would have been very different if Main Street Commons could have beat the recession and been built. That's not the circumstance that happened, but it was the roadway that was designed. So recognizing that this isn't a roadway that's being used for travel, it's very difficult to attract retail users who want to be on a road that no one's driving on. In fact, your national tenants and your boutique tenants want to be in a place that's very visible with high-traffic turnover. So the third issue that comes up here, as you start to look at what happened, the ownership, as they kind of acquire these broken parcels from what was a good plan but a failed execution, they start to figure out, well, who can buy my piece and what can I do with it? And the first one that kind of came in was the VA clinic. I thought it was, it's an air to call a hospital, it's a VA clinic, but I think it was a necessary component for the town. But the unfortunate consequence of it, it did change the vision of what was supposed to be Main Street Commons, this walkable, retail below, lots above. And as a result, the other parcels start a spin-off to just whoever would buy them. And so that's why you start to see the bank, and then Aldi's, and then a bunch of apartments. And then you see the bikini beans come in off of Valvista, and another potential hotel coming down there. And the uniform vision, that I think was well-intended, failed execution, has resulted in this circumstance where I've got this weird piece along a bend of a road that no one's driving, across a street from a retention basin where no one's putting other businesses on there to track other traffic in the corridor. So while this clinic was very important for our town, it sort of changed the dynamic of what was supposed to be the plan in 2004. There still is plenty of retail opportunities, but I think it's interesting that those retail opportunities occur on areas where the retail visibility is significant and where it still can succeed and likely occur. Someone asked me, well, what about office? Could you do office here? And frankly, we have been marking it for, not we, I shouldn't take credit for that. The ownership has been marking it for office and retail opportunities since their acquisition about 2010 or so. One of the challenges with that is there's a lot of empty office right by them. If you look at the old mountainside fitness property, it has about 40,000 square feet of empty office already built. So if somebody really needed to take down quick, immediate office space, it's there and it's been on the market for a year and a half. And then you can go just north of us on Rome Street, Rome, excuse me, Pecos Street, Rome Towers, where there's several offices that are about 4,000 to 10,000 square feet. So if somebody just needed something small, they could have something there quick and ready too. And so trying to attract a large campus office, they would likely go over to where Rivellon is, where you've had a lot of built office, big floor plates that are still empty today. And so just the nature of this project isn't, it's really a victim of the timing that it started with and the infrastructure put in prior to recession coming. But now we're trying to figure out, what can we do? When I look at the office corridor in this submarket, there's eight and a half million square feet between Gilbert and Chandler, which is the identified submarket. And of that, there's 31% vacancy. Even Price Road Corridor, which is, I think, the gem of a city not to be named, a little to the west of us, has 3.2 million empty square feet of office in that area. So I say all this because we would love to have that, and we've been trying to get that. It just won't come, and I don't think it'll ever come post-COVID. So I ask myself, why then am I doing mixed-use? Well, the simple answer is there's one building that I don't have retail on the bottom. But the reality is, by doing retail and office, I now have the Goldilocks zone, which is I can be flexible with spaces as small as 1,000 square feet to about 4,000 or 6,000 square feet, which allows me to tailor a space to a small boutique local user that might not have the necessity of the significant trips that you would, that a national user might expect along Pecos Road. The interesting thing about this process is when I started it, I'm not, let me take a step back, I'm not introducing too much that I'm competing with the former mountainside fitness building or the Rome Towers building. I'm actually creating a new asset class that really doesn't exist. And what's interesting about this is when you look at my plan before, the areas in blue was my commercial previously. And when I filed this case, I had about 9,000 square feet of commercial. And that's when I came into the chamber the first time, and they said, that was cute, but it's really not enough. And we made some changes, and by the time I came to council, we were about 16,000 square feet of commercial. And I really appreciate the wisdom and feedback I got. And I think sometimes my job is to help applicants through the process, and there are times it's to receive good coaching. And the feedback I got then was to consider the three hotels on the south side of that Building 1. Are there people who might be visiting in those hotels there that could maybe frequent and support potential commercial across them? And so we went back and looked at it, and we realized we can do more than just simply office. We can even include opportunities for retail, maybe a small boutique bakery or coffee shop that could be beneficial for those uses over there. But at the same time, being so close to VA clinic, that you could see a medical office component being in here as an ancillary support service. Since council in August, we've come back to the design team, and we've doubled the amount of commercial. And so now we are 35,000 square feet of commercial on the ground floor, everything identified in blue. That's four times the amount that we started with when I submitted it, and it's about 27% of the ground floor. And if you net out the yellow individual enclosed garages, we're almost about 33%. Now, this deal almost didn't happen, and then the reason why it's taken me a while to get here is because it's hard to subsidize that with the project proposed. But thankfully, I have a willing partner in the ownership group who were able to step in and collaborate with the builder here, and together, what was an impossible deal that broke down after August came back to life. And it shows you a willingness of a cooperative seller who wants to make something happen after years and decades of trying here at this property. So at the end of the day, our open space didn't go down. At the end of the day, our units didn't go down, but our commercial doubled, or if you look at the beginning, it was quadrupled from the beginning, from the first case. And I like this slide that staff showed in a different presentation, but it's helpful. As staff did some analysis on a very different issue, but they recognize the value per acre and how important it is in our town. And some of the areas that have the greatest value per acre are mixed-use areas, which allows us to capture the revenue both from sales tax, property tax, development tax, but also folks who live here can shop and support the businesses nearby. And the blending of those two in one single parcel actually makes this a higher value per acre than many of the other parcels across town. And so as the chamber revisited this and looked at it a second time, recognizing that we have heard the concerns of council and from the chamber, and come back and revise the plan, they wrote a different letter of support. I'm very grateful for what they've acknowledged, that this property has some inherent challenges. We can't change roadway alignment, we can't change the retention basin across the street, we can't change that no one's driving this road. But the fact that we have listened and added double what we were last time shows a willingness from both a seller and a developer that they want to try to create momentum, even in an area that could be challenged and difficult. So at the end of the day, this, in a funny cycle, restores back the idea of mixed-use commercial that started this project in 2004, long before any of us were on the dais or here at this room. And while the recession put some of these conditions in place, today is a really good chance to make a good correction out of a frustration that occurred in 2007. At the end of the day, it's the right solution for a street that's rarely traveled. It's a really good use with the 202 growth plan, as Mayor mentioned last time and as Ashley pointed out here. It's been unanimously supported by the Planning Commission. I haven't heard any public concerns about it. And with the chamber letter of support, which recognizes their voice as the leader of the business community, clearly seeing the value and the change coming forward, is a good thing for the town. I appreciate where staff's at, and, but I think this is the right use, and hopefully you'll recognize that we've heard and revised the plan based on the feedback we received. Mayor, you have a long agenda. Tried to be as brief as I could without shortchanging any of the attention that you need, but I'm happy to answer any questions that this council may have.
Council members, any questions? It's Member Ban Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, my issue with this the first time was not having enough commercial. So I appreciate you guys more than doubling the commercial on it. And I also have to recognize that not all the time, I mean, I hate getting rid of commercial property, resoning commercial property, but not all the time is the zoning, I feel, appropriate. I agree with you as far as that road. I used to have an office at Rome Towers. I can't see more commercial happening there, but I do appreciate you doubling that. Now, with my bad math skills, I just want to verify this with you. 367 doors, average of $14,000 going to our water and sewer, that's about $5 million in
Bingo.
...development fees, which is about 1% of our total project that we need for $750 billion.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for verifying that for me. Appreciate it.
It's probably $110 million ourselves, which would be about five and a quarter million just in impact fees and development fees.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no request to speak. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and/or a motion. Councilmember Kaprowski.
Thank you, staff and Mr. Baugh. With the additional office, as Councilwoman Ban Giovanni mentioned, and with planning and zoning and chamber support, I move to approve General Plan GP 24-08 and zoning Z 24-20 with conditions A through X.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Ban Giovanni. Motion carries. We'll go on to item 36. General Plan 2501 and zoning Z 2502 Willowbrook. Staff?
I'm Kristin Devine. I'm a senior planner with the town. The project I'm bringing before you tonight is for a rezoning and a general plan amendment for the Willowbrook community. You previously saw this in August, and it was continued at that time so that staff and the applicant could better explore some alternative traffic measures that the residents were concerned with. So I'm going to do a brief recap here of the project. It's located on 156th Street and Riggs Road. This is just east of Valvista. It's currently zoned as SF 43, and what the applicant is requesting is to rezone this property to SF 6, with the planned area development requesting some deviations on setbacks and lot coverage, and with a general plan amendment to also go along with it from zero to one dwelling units per acre to two to 3.5 dwelling units per acre. Just as a refresher, this is the development plan that they're proposing. It's 91 lots with a minimum of 6,600 square feet per lot. It covers approximately 26.4 acres. There's 18% of open space proposed for a total density of 3.45 dwelling units per acre for the project. I would like to point out also that the red dot lots on the bottom are all single-story restricted lots. Just a brief recap of those deviation requests that we went over back in August. The applicant is requesting a deviation on the front side and rear setbacks, as well as lot coverage. Front setbacks, the only deviations that they're requesting aren't for the setback number, but they would like to eliminate the staggering requirement for the front setbacks. Side setbacks, we're requesting a deviation of five feet, so from a 10-foot requirement on one side to a five-foot requirement on the other. Rear setback, also not eliminating the actual setback number, but they are requesting the elimination of increased setbacks adjacent to arterial and collector roadways. To compromise, they are increasing the lot size from 6,000 square foot, which is standard for SF 6, to 6,600 square feet. They are increasing the lot depth from the required 100 feet to 120 feet. They are implementing that single-story restriction on the southern boundary, and the open space is 18% where 10% is required. So back in August, the concern was largely due to traffic. We were asked at that time to look into alternative traffic measures to see what we could do since the signal was not requested at that time. So with that, I'd like to invite Susannah, our town engineer, up to discuss some of the traffic measures that we have to present for you.
Thank you, Kristin. Okay, let's see if I can manage this technology. Good evening, council members, vice mayor and mayor. The staff has been working really hard with the developer at this point in time to see what types of alternatives that we can do to provide that safe and efficient traffic flow, not only on Riggs Road, but also as the left turns and the outbound traffic happens on 156th Street. Just as a quick reminder of where we were at back in August when we first looked at this, the traffic study was indicating that a signal was not warranted at this site. There are nine criteria, they call them warrants, that you're usually looked at to say if they meet those certain thresholds or meet their criteria and that, that they would then, we would consider having a signal placed at this intersection. At the time, and still today, nine of those criteria are not met and will not be met with this development. So just generally, we looked at several of them, but there is about three of them warrant, the first and second warrant, and then the seventh warrant, where the first and second one are volume-related, that the seventh one is a volume and a crash-related. We do believe that if this intersection were to require a signal, those would be the three that would probably trigger it at first. I put a few numbers up here. There's a whole lot more behind this than that. And so, but generally, one of the criteria from a volume perspective is that for a four-hour volume, so you would have to have 64 vehicles per hour making that left-hand turn currently. So that would be four hours out of a 24-hour timeframe, that you would have to have 64 vehicles doing that. Currently, we only have 13 vehicles in the existing peak, which means that's the most that's ever coming through in one hour out of that 24-hour timeframe. When this subdivision does come in, there will only be 44 vehicles per hour that come through there. So we're still not meeting those thresholds or those requirements, and this is just one example of the nine criteria that we're looking at. In addition to that, from a safety perspective, and the warrant number seven not only addresses some more volume, but it also talks about crashes that would occur in there and when that, a crash rate would basically require that signal. So the criteria for that one is that they would have to have 10 angled or left crashes in one year. Currently, over the past five years, we've only had 10 total crashes in five years at that intersection. One of those is a southbound left, so it's coming from the north side, southbound. The other one is the northbound coming out of the subdivision. So again, we are far from meeting those criteria. We've done a little bit of input as well as looking into our system, or maybe I have looked into it. I know our traffic engineers have known this for a while. We have about 44 signals right now that we are looking at on a regular basis to make sure that we can meet the warrants before we actually put a signal in. This intersection is on that, and because it is on that list, we look at it on an annual basis to say, are we getting close to those criteria? This actually is number 44 on that list, but we are continuing to look at it on an annual basis to make sure it would meet that, to basically require that signal. So our goal really is to improve safety effectiveness for that northbound left turn on 156th Street onto Riggs Road. And we challenge the traffic staff, we challenge the developer to say, what are our opportunities to basically create an area where those left-hand turns become more comfortable and feel as if they are a better and a safer, you know, environment for them, even though the numbers are showing that it is probably performing as it should in an unsignalized situation? So we've looked at opportunities that range around site visibility. There's the gaps in the traffic, so traffic that's coming from left and right, on the east and the west side, that you have enough time to get across that intersection and make it, and you feel comfortable that you're able to do that before that traffic would make it, and you feel comfortable that you're able to do that before that traffic would close in on you. We have also alternative routes that we've looked at to say, what can, what are some other alternatives that we can lessen the number of vehicles that would be coming into that intersection to make that left turn? We also looked at some different configurations on the intersection itself, and then adding to that is some speed controls, because I know that speed was also a question for several of the property owners out there. So from a site distance concern, we do know that there are a couple areas that we have some vegetation in the way that we want to basically get to a point of having some removals. On the southwest corner of Riggs and one hundred and fifty-sixth Street, there's a little tree that's sitting on the private property over there that is in the county right now. We will need to work to probably pull that down so that they have a good visual to be able to see any traffic that is coming to them eastbound. And then when you look to your right and you're coming for this traffic that is coming westbound, we have a canal that's out there ways, and there is a little bit of a challenge with a rise in the roadway there. We need to make sure that that visibility is there with any improvements that we might make, but also there's some vegetation and some heavy vegetation of some trees. So we're also suggesting that we look into that and clear that out so that we are able to really see the visibility of the cars that are traveling on Riggs Road here. So as far as a gap goes, we've done some calculated analysis that basically says, what kind of, what time does it take to go from a stop condition on one hundred and fifty-sixth Street to make that left turn across the three lanes of traffic and get up to the forty-five mile per hour without having to stop in a unprotected kind of open area there? That timeframe we've calculated is about thirteen seconds, so about four hundred feet out, we need to have cars that far away when we start our turn. We're going to take five seconds to get across that roadway, and then as we're looking to the right-hand side, we need another eight seconds before cars will basically approach us from that, from the westbound. So what we know is with that thirteen-inch gap, or that thirteen-second gap, we've looked at how the traffic is flowing through there and determined that maybe there's some signal timing we can do to allow the signals that are east and west of here to be able to be adjusted somewhat to open that gap up. We've made some initial changes to that right now, working with the developer, and then over the last month, we've had a few challenges. We had a water line break. We had some paving going on in this area, and we had two fall breaks that were going on. So we didn't feel a hundred percent that we understood exactly where the traffic was. So we're going to continue to work with the developer, and they have agreed to work with us. We always knew it was kind of be iterative to see what we can do to widen that gap and give that thirteen second in there for the majority of the day. So as an alternative route, I know there's been some discussion about what if we go south on one hundred and fifty-sixth through that subdivision and then go out to San Tan Boulevard to hit Val Vista, and there's been a question on that one. I don't have an example of that here. But if that were to be used for that sixty-one lot subdivision down there, we would have to acquire right-of-way from RWCD to do that and work through that, along with have some agreement with to move their canal out of the way, et cetera, et cetera. So it's pretty tight between the two subdivisions out there. We didn't look too deep into that, but we felt that that was probably a nonstarter. There is private access right now between those two subdivisions to be able to get through there on an emergency perspective so they can go through the additional subdivision that's there through Val Vista and then take a right turn and head out. But that was one that I didn't show you here, but that is one that has been asked about, and we don't feel that it is probably a viable alternative for us at this point in time. The next one, from an alternative route, and this is really kind of a combination of several things here with this one, and that is to provide a U-turn that is closer than what we have down at Adora Trails. So right now, if you do not, if you're coming eastbound and you do not take a left turn there at one hundred and fifty-sixth Street, you have to go all the way down to Adora Trails to that light in order to make a flip around to head back westbound. So we looked at that and said, what are some of our options? And I know the property owners were a little bit concerned about some of that U-turning that is happening in one hundred and fifty-sixth Street. There are people that maybe miss the light at ALA or choose to get around that light. They come up and take a left turn so that they can take a right turn into some of those other accessways to the north, the schools to the north. So we looked at this and said, okay, so how, what could we do that maybe would allow that same type of thing to happen as a U-turn? And from that, we know that there's two things that can help move traffic off of one hundred and fifty-sixth Street and make that left-hand turn through what we consider a two-stage U-turn. You would take a right-hand turn, move over the three lanes, go into a storage bay, make the U-turn, and then head back westbound. There will be two opportunities with this subdivision to do that, one at one hundred and fifty-sixth Street, because they have access onto one hundred and fifty-sixth Street with this subdivision. And then we have their secondary, their other access that is actually on Riggs Road, which would have to do the same thing already, is go down all the way to Adora Trails if they wanted to come back westbound. So we have worked with them to say, would you be interested in putting that U-turn in? And this is, they've agreed to do that, so that is one that we have looked at. And I think it basically allows you to move over in a comfortable fashion. You have some storage space in that median when you move over to, before you do the U-turn and feel comfortable that you can pull back out to go to forty-five miles an hour without the cars heading westbound, you know, hitting you. So the intersection reconfiguration that we looked at and we talked about was actually taking the median out on the east, to remove the eastbound median nose. That median nose right now allows traffic to head, take a left turn at that intersection with a raised median to go up into the subdivision that's on the north-hand side. If we remove the hard raised median there and we put in a two-way left turn lane, that would allow anybody to take that left turn, and they actually would be able to sit into that two-way lane before they actually pulled out, giving them, again, a little bit of time to basically look at one lane coming at them one direction and then one the other. And then the last one is a little bit out there, a little bit more, where we start improving those medians or changing those medians to where it's no longer a four-way intersection, but it becomes two three-way intersections in reality. And when it would basically create a median in the center of that road that allows the one hundred and fifty-sixth Street going northbound to take a left turn left to get to go westbound, again, you have a storage lane to be able to get up to speed to that forty-five miles an hour, or you can come into that area if they're leftbound. What it does is it cuts completely off anybody going north or wanting to take a leftbound north from that, and we would restrict anything coming southbound on that neighborhood to the north to only be right in and right out. That one is probably the most extensive one that we've looked at. So from that perspective, we also looked at the speed control because we know that that's a challenge as well. We've looked at speed feedback signs. We would put in solar-powered ones. You've seen them out there. We primarily use these speed zone or speed feedback signs on our collector systems around schools. We use them also. You've seen them down in the Heritage District as well. So we are not using them in a frequent situation. We do like to analyze that and make sure that we're doing it appropriately in the right spot and able to sign, put that in the right spot. And then the second one, which we've been talking to you guys about, some, what are some of the other options that we have for safety that helps us with the reduction of speed, getting that feedback, but also potentially issuing tickets without having police officers out there to do that, and that's a speed enforcement camera. So that, if we were to work towards that direction on that one, we would have to put a policy in place that the council would approve in order to do that, and then it would be, how do we basically set up the contracts to manage any tickets that were there? How do we recoup the money, et cetera, et cetera? So a little bit of work that we would have to do there, but that is one that we're continuing to research at this point in time. So we kind of looked at a decision-making matrix, and it appears from our perspective that we want to do the least impactful. We don't want to necessarily change too much of some existing things that are happening. So that property that's on the north or the development that's on the north side, cutting them off from being able to make a left-hand turn would probably open up some challenges from that neighborhood as well. So we're looking at trimming the vegetation. Let's get that site distance a little bit more improved. Let's put some signal timing adjustments in and then also put that downstream median U-turn and also restrict the U-turn right there at one hundred and fifty-sixth Street is our, is how we would look at that, is to say, those would be our best recommendations at this point in time to improve the feel for that safety and that efficiency of the work in that area. We are going to continue to look at the speed back, the speed feedback signs, that two-way left turn, continue to evaluate that, as that may end up being another thing that we would promote maybe in the future, or then also continue to watch those new signal warrants. We are not recommending at this point in time at all on the signal enforcement cameras because we're working with you on that, but this may be a location in some day that we would put that in. And then the T-intersection, we're also not recommending that at this time. So that's where we're at, is to trim the educations, continue doing that iterative process on that signal timing, put that downstream median U-turn on, and then put that no-U-turn sign up right there at one hundred and fifty-sixth Street, and then continue working through those mitigation efforts. So I'm going to turn this over back to Kristin at this time. Thank you. Or if you have questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you. Suzanne, thank you. Can you go back to the recommendations again? Sorry, one more before that.
One more back?
Yep. Okay. Speed feedback signs, how would that be a detriment? Do it now, also with your other recommended things?
My only concern with that one is, is just have other areas that they may be needed as well.
Okay.
And we'd like to spend a little bit of time saying, what is the plan to address this across town in some of the other areas that we're looking into? So it's much like the cameras themselves where we're, you know, the enforcement cameras kind of maybe looking at it as a more comprehensive. It is something that I think we could do. I just would like to maybe take a bigger picture and work through it as maybe this development is actually going in, to put that in.
Okay. Can I, Chief, can I put you on the spot? I know that you guys have been doing some speed enforcement down there, because I see it. Again, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but do you have any data over the last month or so, since we last met? How many warnings? How many tickets? Any idea?
Here, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, I do not, but I can get that for you probably in the morning. But that is one of the locations amongst the many that we rotate through. So we'll dedicate, as we identify areas that need enforcement and education, that is on the list, and we'll rotate through that list consistently, sometimes going back to repeat locations. So I can get that for you, but I don't have it tonight.
Okay. So I see the officer there every once in a while when I ride my bike.
I believe they're looking for you.
I don't go sixty miles an hour on my bike, though, but yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Torgas?
I have a question. I believe I'm the reason you looked at a, using the Roosevelt Water easement, which I thought was mostly county there, but you've said that you don't feel that it's something worth pursuing. But a feeling is one thing, is can we take a better look at that? Because that would solve all these problems for that community, and it shouldn't, if it's got access now for emergencies, to be able to make it a little bit more usable, I don't think it's that unfeasible to give it a try.
We certainly can continue to look at it. It's not going to be an immediate support for this. We do expect that, working with Roosevelt Water Conservation, getting it on, you know, into the CIP, looking at it from that perspective to understand what the overall costs are and what the capabilities are with that. It's going to take us some time to do that, and so I think that that's really why we're saying, at this point in time, we don't think it's going to be that immediate support that would be needed in this area.
So it's not off the table, but it's not on the table for this conversation here.
Right.
Okay.
Councilmember Lyons?
Suzanne, on the U-turn lanes we're talking about, I'll back, yeah. I'm going to go to the U-turns. Did you guys, when you did the traffic study, look at how many cars made a right out of there and then went down to the light and hung a U-turn there in your count for people going left?
So I don't know that we have gotten it all the way down to Adora Trails. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, because that's where I see.
Just going right and then coming in? What I do know is right there at one hundred and fifty-sixth Street right now, we have, in the peak hour, we have thirteen cars going left and thirteen cars going right. So they are basically going both directions right now at almost an equal rate, based off of the information that we've looked at.
Does, is anybody even taking a look at that to see how many right turns ended up actually truly being a left turn?
So you're asking, how many of those thirteen would we go back and then come back? I don't know that we have that information, but we certainly can add that to some of the other work that we're doing as we're looking at the signalization.
When I, go back to your slide, well, let's stick with this one person, and I want to look at a slide on this. Chief, and this may not, this is a question for you, and this slide may not be a really good picture of that, but when I look at the U-turn coming out of the other drive that's proposed on both of these, really, how many feet by law do you have to be in a lane before you can make changes to go over three lanes of traffic?
I don't think the code specifies, roughly speaking, it's about three seconds. I'd have to look to see if there's an actual, you need to be able to enter a lane and then signal to the next lane safely in that timeframe. So that's tight, but it's doable if, as long as you, to do a property, because you've got to enter that first lane, which will be the right lane, then merge to the second, then the third, then into the U-turn. So that second entrance is a little tight, but it's probably within code because it's not defined in the statute of specific feet, because it depends on your speed.
Your speed.
So your speed's going to dictate how much time that takes to get from one point to the other. But to be, so it is tight on that second one, excuse me. The other one, obviously, you've got time. So it is a concern that that would be a tight timeframe now if there's no traffic or limited traffic and you can, you have to do a property, get into the first lane. You can't just make what we would call a wide right. You're making that right turn and then going all the way left. You've got to go into the first lane, proceed to the middle, then the third, then into the left turn lane.
So from your opinion, it would be a tight?
It's legal, but it's tight. In my opinion.
All right. And given the speeds that we know that are going down there on that road, how feasible is it, in your opinion?
Using my Councilmember Bon Giovanni math, forty-five miles per hour, your distance, it's your, plus half, so forty-five, you're going forty-five feet, plus half of that is another twenty-two feet, so you're going sixty-six, sixty-eight feet per second. So depending on your speed, that's going to either increase or decrease based on your speed. If you're going forty-five miles per hour, so I don't know what the distance is from that intersection to that U-turn.
Right.
If some math, the math for me, forty-five miles per hour, you're going about sixty-six feet per second.
Okay. All right. And Suzanne, could you go back to the slide that has the picture of what the proposed number of cars making a left turn would be when you were looking at the warrants aspect of that?
Yes. Let me add to what he just said there. Looked at this extensively. The distance between that second or that entrance onto Riggs to that U-turn is about four hundred and fifty feet, which is twice of what we would do when we basically do offsets on most of our signals, and we do believe that they could do that in about a five-second timeframe. So, and we believe it's a doable type opportunity, so. And again, those are calculated, so just letting you know that that's, we've looked into that and placed that, that U-turn in a place that we have some freedom still, I think, to go a little bit farther east. The farther east we get, that rise at the canal is going to create some site distances. We do believe that'll happen, and we also have, you know, we'll be looking at that from a design perspective as it gets, as it gets provided to us from the developer to ensure that we're giving people enough time to make that, the move that the chief just basically gave us, so.
All right.
All right. And I think you're looking for this one?
Yes. So you're saying the proposed peak's going to be about forty-four, but the threshold is, what, about sixty-five vehicles per hour?
The, this one here is a four-hour volume, so when you're looking at it, you're saying you have to have four hours within that twenty-four window, that each of those hours have to have sixty-four vehicles on average going through them. And right now, we've only got a peak of forty-four as we calculate that for the, with the proposed development, so it's another thirty on top of the thirteen that was there initially.
So, but that does not include the people that are making a right going and down to Adora Trails and hooking a Louis to go back left, right?
Yeah. So, again, I, now we're getting way up into my traffic engineering, all the little things that they gave me to look at. And I do believe that based off of what we've looked at there, is that there was maybe only one or two in the only one or two in the records that we got that showed that there was actually a U-turn happening at that intersection. What we're trying to do though is to prevent those U-turns happening at the intersection themselves.
I know studying the light, watching it when I went down there a couple of times, there were, there were several that were doing that.
I think it just depends on what day of the week it is as well, so absolutely.
Okay. With that said, I, would it be fair to say that if we added that to that, that 44 would increase?
If we added?
The people that are going down and hooking a U-turn at Adora?
I think that this was a very conservative number, so I think it's high for, based off of what I've been told by our traffic engineers, the calculation on this does appear to be a little bit high because some of this is based off of more traffic using 156th Street than taking the exit and go right, right-hand out of that development. So there's a lot of, you know, looking at how the dispersment happens, et cetera, as it goes in there, so. But I'm going to assume that the 44, and I'm going to feel pretty confident of that assumption, that the 44 is addressing any of those U-turns that are happening there as well.
And I want to go on the record saying I think the development is a good idea. I just have major concerns about the traffic down there.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Suzanne, across the street, my guess is when that future development is built, that this would create a warrant for that site?
Absolutely. We really do believe that the development on the north side that's undeveloped, that area right there, will definitely push to put a warrant of, or a requirement of that signal in at that point in time. There'll be enough traffic that I think's coming southbound in that area that will create that. If not two of them, there might be another one that would be a little bit farther east of the one at 156th Street.
When you change the timing that you suggested, did you get two cars through there at a time, three? What's your estimate?
Okay, excuse, okay, explain, ask the question again. I don't think I quite understood it. Sorry, Councilmember.
I saw the timing change that you were suggesting.
Hmm.
Could we get two cars through, three cars, with that extra, with that extra lane to turn there?
But what they're doing is trying to balance how many cars are coming during a certain timeframe.
Right.
And they hold at a certain amount of time at that signal. It depends on what the volume is at the timeframe. And then it would come through on both of those. So they're adjusting that timing so that there is an opening from when the light is red, right? And allowing enough time for it to, that opening.
Are we talking?
I don't know if that's one or two or three cars.
Okay.
It also depends on the time of day as well, so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Kristin, did you have some more to add? Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have some questions.
Suzanne?
Well, I'm not, I had some questions for her. Pardon me. Well, I wanted to, I wanted to discuss the recommendations that she had.
Kristin's.
Oh, okay, okay.
I, sorry. I just have like three extra closing slides, and if there's still questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you. So the last couple of slides I just wanted to go over is, should you choose to approve this project and should you choose to adopt the U-turn option that Suzanne touched on earlier? We would like to add these two conditions to the approval. The first, developers shall be responsible for Riggs Road improvements, east of 156th Street improvements, don't mind that typo, I apologize, shall include the construction of an eastbound left turn bay and storage, removal of median vegetation that obstructs site visibility for 156th Street, and installation of a no U-turn sign for eastbound traffic at 156th Street. And then the second condition being, developers shall conduct a before and after intersection gap analysis for signal timing adjustments. And then I just wanted to reiterate that staff does recommend approval of the general plan and the rezoning. It does meet the intent of the Santan character area. And those were, those were the last two slides. That was kind of anticlimactic, I'm sorry. So we are available for your remaining questions now.
Vice Mayor, did you have some questions you wanted to ask?
Okay. I did have a couple of questions. I think the first slide you just did, if you can go back to that, might have answered those. Is this the first one you did that you put up?
In the very beginning, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, in the very beginning when I spoke or just this time?
No, this time.
This one, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and some of this, that's, my question was going to be, what does a developer want? And I think this kind of states what he wants there. And can you go back to the recommendations? Is, is this the ending, this is what you recommended? And I'm a little bit confused as to what the end result is, exactly what your, you know, your, the developer is wanting.
Yeah, so Mayor, Vice Mayor, our recommendation is to eliminate some of that vegetation to improve the site visibility. It is to install the downstream U-turn, a no U-turn sign for eastbound traffic. And the developer is in agreement with these. They present the conditions, also the two added conditions, and they're agreeable to stop you. Does that answer your question?
Okay, yes. I just want to know, because it seems to me it's a little bit unfinished. I, are we going to have a presentation from the developer? Okay. I think I'll wait. I'd like to listen to what the developer has to say, and I think he will probably answer the rest of the questions that I have. I just want to know what they actually want out of what you've recommended.
Yeah, absolutely. The purpose of this was more to just explain the different avenues that we did look into at your request from August, and then landing on the recommendation for the downstream U-turn.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kristin. I'll open the public hearing and invite the applicant to come up.
Thank you. I'm okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Brennan Ray, 2325 East Councilback, here on behalf of Lennar Homes. I have a full presentation that I can go through. I don't know that it's particularly relevant at this particular time, but there are a few things that I would like to emphasize. One, we have worked closely with town transportation staff in conducting the gap analysis. Our team has been out there, and we've worked closely with them, town staff, on that analysis, on some additional questions, diving deep into what was conducted out there to understand whether or not there's gaps in it. We have had discussions with them about the additional stipulations that you saw put on the screen tonight. We are agreeable to those conditions in terms of additional improvements because this is a good development in an area that we need some housing in. The other thing that I will tell you is that as we look at this, and this is, when you always start talking traffic, it starts at a site and then you go and look bigger as you go throughout it. As we've visited with staff, we know that there's some regional improvements that are going to impact Riggs Road and the volume of traffic on that. In talking with the town engineer Suzanne, with the Oketillo Road improvements that you guys are underway over the Wash, that by, I think the town's estimation is going to lead to a 10% reduction in traffic on Riggs Road. And so there are some other regional improvements that will improve the condition of Riggs Road. Further to the east of you in Queen Creek, I know they're heavily looking at their transportation plan because again, there's not a lot of north-south if you look further southeast as it heads to the west. And so there are some regional improvements that will take place in the future in Queen Creek and then further in the newly incorporated Santan Valley as well. So there are other things that are kind of upstream from you guys that are going to improve the downstream flow. But as it pertains to what we're talking about tonight, we believe and agree with the recommendations that staff has proposed, and we're agreeable to doing those, to trim in the vegetation, to putting the U-turn lane in the appropriate spot, installing that no U-turn sign. We certainly, to Councilmember Lyons' comments, we certainly want to make sure that people exiting our site through our entrance are able to safely make that transition across. And while it was generally depicted on that aerial that staff had put up, as we get into the engineering details, we're going to fine-tune that to make sure that there is appropriate spacing for people to make safe lane travels as well. As staff indicated, we have to balance that coming over the canal and ensuring that there's good site visibility there. But that is something that we're going to continue to work with them on to get it in as optimal a location as possible when we're talking about that. The other thing that I will tell you, I know there was a number of things up there that they're considering, I know there was, and continuing to monitor. We would estimate that between today and when the models would be open in this community in the event you choose to approve it, there were 18 to 24 months before models will open. So that does afford us time, it does afford staff some additional time to look at some of these kind of bigger picture items that I know they presented to you guys tonight. So there still is an opportunity for the additional analysis to continue before this subdivision goes live. Again, I can go into a lot more detail if necessary, but we would request your recommendation for approval with the additional stipulations consistent with staff's recommendation and the planning commission's recommendation. Happy to answer any questions. I also do have Don Cartier with CivTech, our traffic engineer, that should I not be able to answer questions? I'm sure she might be able to.
Thank you. Questions, council? No? Thank you. I do have two requests to speak. Stephen, I'm trying to make out your last name, starts with an M. Come up, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Distinguished councilmembers. Stephen Marvin, I'm a Marathon Ranch resident representing also part of our HOA board here. While I appreciate the traffic study, I think, you know, it was, it was pointed out and, you know, very well pointed out that the traffic study was done during fall break. So you missed, unfortunately, there was a miss in the data there. You know, it, the last traffic study, and I, forgive me, Councilmember Bon Giovanni, but I think it was you that had your math on this. You know, the presentation right before this talked about Pecos Road having 29 cars per minute using, Councilmembers, sorry, Councilmember Lyons, oh, Councilmember Torgerson, sorry. Using their math, we calculated it out to be, you know, a little over 100 cars per minute along Riggs Road. I think it was commonly referred to as Riggs Highway at that point. I don't know how I'm going to, even with a U-turn out there, I don't know how I'm going to be able to send any of my kids or any, any of you recommend that you make that U-turn, especially with the sight lines coming over that canal. That's just not feasible. You know, so while I appreciate the traffic study that was done, I just think that, you know, pragmatically, you know, we're kicking the can down the road for something that is absolutely needed. Traffic control is done through stoplights just as well as any of the other objects that were presented today. And so, you know, we know that that, we know that the intersection is going in across the way. However, now's the time to do it. Case in point, just today, just to get out of my development, to come to this meeting, it took me 11 minutes to turn left. I was the third car in line, one car turning left at the beginning, one car turning right, and then myself. 11 minutes just to turn left at 5:40 in the afternoon. I did make it here in time thankfully, but, you know, I don't, I don't think 11 minutes is appropriate. That's my opinion, personally. Another anecdote for that, just real quick. Sunday morning at 6:00 AM, there were two Gilbert police officers with two people pulled over at 6:00 AM on my way to the airport. That's got to tell you something that even at 6:00 AM, it's a highway. The last thing that I wanted to bring up was the setbacks. You know, we've argued before about the setbacks with the proposed setbacks being a non-staggered position. We feel that even though the houses may have setbacks to themselves based upon the facade of the, of the house, it doesn't meet the adequate requirements that the town of Gilbert has set forth already. So I thank you for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. Second card is, assuming is your wife, Kayleen Marvin, but she does not want to speak because she's opposed also.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and/or motion. Councilmember Torgerson?
Suzanne, could I bring you up again? My math still stands from our last meeting, and I think we're missing something. If we're missing that it was on a holiday week. Somehow, Councilman Bon Giovanni, Councilman Lyons, they were down there, they had difficulty trying to navigate that. When I asked you and someone else the math, it was irrefutable. We're missing something, and we have to, I'm not opposed to the building of the community, but I am concerned that even without that community, these people have an 11-minute wait. Something is being missed, and what commitment can we make to Marathon Ranch that we're not going to miss this and somehow solve that problem beyond a U-turn? Because a U-turn's not acceptable to me. I want to find a solution. What commitment can we make as a town to solve this problem? Because it's, we're arguing over whether it was done during a fall break or what time of day it was, or if it was on a Tuesday or a Saturday. There's a problem there. These people aren't making this up. They're not, they're, I've been down there twice. One time there was no issue, another time there was a huge issue. How do we, how can we commit to these people to solve the problem and not take it out on the back of, if the developer has to pay something, he does, I mean, if it's a true cost incurred by him, but to not slow down the progress of this, but commit to them something that will solve this problem once and for all? Not a, not a halfway job.
Yes, Councilman Torgerson and Mayor Anderson, I think the answer to that question is, with our traffic team, we are constantly and always looking at safety and efficiency on our roadways. We are constantly going to be doing that. So I think this recommendation that we brought before you really basically said, we think this is an iterative process to deal with that, and we're going to continue to work down that list that we've talked about, to say, let's start with these items that we believe are ones that can support alternatives to get around the current left turn. If the U-turn would have been in, the time got too long, and it's a safe turn, you know, we take the right turn, and then we take that U-turn, the 11 minutes probably would have gone away. And so that, those are the things that we're working through as we go through that. If we continue to have issues and we continue to monitor and continue to see problems, as we do with every other intersection that is on our lists or on the things that we watch, as our PD are looking at, we just continue to work and work and work and work until we can get that comfort, that efficiency, that ability to have that, that safe movement within our, within our roadways. So I think that's the commitment we make every day, so I know that's not the answer you want to hear, but I think, I think that's, that's where we're trying to go forward with this at this time. And certainly, you know, once a signal goes in, that is still not a guarantee we're not going to have accidents and crashes there, and the delays are going to be also different than what they are today, just because you've got your signal stopped and you don't get to go for a certain amount of time. So there are those types of things that are going to affect it over time as well.
Councilmember Kaprowski.
Thank you, Suzanne, for bringing back the additional information and the evaluation and the recommendations. I agree with those recommendations. And I want to touch upon something you mentioned, which is that the town has a ranked list of unsignalized intersections for traffic signal warrant evaluation. It's my understanding that that list is very important to have because it, with limited resources, it protects the town from liability when we have crashes at those intersections because we know that we cannot fund or build 44 intersections or more, even if they are warranted. And so even if this intersection was warranted, you're saying that there are 43 other intersections other intersections in the community that actually rank higher, that we would need to look at and address before we should do this one because of that prioritization.
That is correct. Someone Kaprowski.
Thank you, and thank you for also answering that last question regarding if someone doesn't want to wait to make that northbound left, they could make the right and go to the Adora Trails currently, or make the left at Higley, and that'd be a far less delay than the eleven minutes mentioned. We do have a physical barrier here in this area with the canal that is immovable, and so it's simply, I think, the conditions that exist for this piece of land. I think that this project of single-family homes and with the evaluation and conditions set forth, I move to approve General Plan GP 2501 and zoning Z 2502 with staff conditions including K and L.
One more question, I'm sorry.
We have a motion on the table.
I know, but I have one more question.
Okay.
Before that. I'll be happy to second that after I give my question.
Okay.
Suzanne, so you're saying that you and your staff is committed to continue to monitor that for the next eighteen to twenty-four months and make any appropriate changes or recommendations during that time, if we continue to hear the residents of Marathon Ranch having more concerns? You're willing to say, you're willing, you're willing, so I can give my commitment to them in the next eighteen to twenty-four months, if they're coming here every meeting with an issue that we're going to continue to solve this?
We are continuing to monitor all intersections within the town to assure that we're getting safety out of them. This will be one that we continue to do that with.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Please vote. Councilmember Lyons and Councilmember Buckland opposed. Thank you. We'll continue on with communication. Vice Mayor.
Okay, so we're going to continue communications from citizens, and I am going to read the rules of decorum once again. So the town of Gilbert values citizens' comments and input. Anyone wishing to speak before the council must fill out a request to speak card for each item. They wish to speak on and to submit to the town clerk or place it in the bin provided prior to the start of the meeting. Once the meeting starts, there are no more, you know, the ability is no longer there to sign, to speak. The communications from citizens portions of the agenda provide citizens an opportunity to identify for the town council matters of interest or concern related to the town government. Under the provisions of the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the town council is prohibited from responding to issues that have not been properly noticed. Therefore, the town council may only listen to citizens who wish to address them, and at the conclusion of the open call to public response is limited to individual members of the council responding to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, asking staff to review a matter or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. In accordance with the town code, each speaker is limited to three minutes. Priority will be given to Gilbert residents, business owners, and property owners. Public comments will be limited to thirty minutes total at the beginning of the meeting. The town clerk will notify the council once thirty minutes limit has been reached. In addition, comments remain, they will, they will be heard after the conclusion of the public hearing items, which is where we are now. This is the same three-minute limit per speaker. While people can not donate their time to others, they can designate a person to speak on behalf of a group of people. The town asks that when your name is called, you come forward to the podium, state your name and place of residence, and then begin speaking. All speakers are expected to observe common standards of decorum and courtesy. Personal attacks, political speeches, or threats of political action are inappropriate in this forum and will be grounds at the discretion of the mayor for the ending of a speaker's time at the podium. We truly value your engagement and public participation in our town council meetings. For those here specifically related to water and utility rates and are looking to troubleshoot potential discrepancies, we currently have the customer service support staff on site in the tower room located directly outside the council chambers. And with that, I will begin calling the remaining speakers, and the first speaker will be Melanie Winfield.
My name is Melanie Winfield. I live in Gilbert, at White Fence Farms. Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm the owner of Happy Goat &amp; Co. Together with my husband, we've spent the past twelve years here in Gilbert raising our four wonderful children and building a small family farm where I create sustainable, healthy products for our community. Over the past two years, the town of Gilbert has implemented some of the highest water increases in the valley, forty-eight percent in 2024, twenty-five percent in 2025, with more planned next year. Also, it was noted that there haven't been any rate increases in the last fifteen years, but there was a rate increase in 2018 at eleven point nine percent, and also a rate increase in 2022 at twenty-nine point six percent. So we have had rate increases in the last few years, but I want to speak specifically on the recent rate increases. We were shocked, we were shocked, when our once-average sixty to eighty monthly water bill ballooned to two-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred dollars with no change in usage. As a farmer, I understand how precious water is in the desert. I fully support responsible infrastructure and clean water, but these deep price hikes are more than an inconvenience, they are a financial crisis. Another concern that has become clear is how the current tiered billing system affects families who live on larger lots, especially those of us who raise animals, grow food, or maintain agriculture space. Properties over three-quarters of an acre are automatically pushed into the higher-priced tiers simply because of the land we maintain and not because we're wasteful. For small farms like ours, the system doesn't recognize responsible use, it penalizes sustainability. The people working hardest to conserve resources and produce locally are being charged the most. People on smaller lots or using minimal water aren't impacted the same way, but those caring for livestock, crops, livestock or crops, these bills make it difficult, even impossible, to continue. If this pattern continues, Gilbert risks losing a very small, Gilbert risks losing the very small farms and open spaces that make this community unique. Here are a few things to consider. Pause any further rate increases until an independent financial and engineering audit is completed. Two, provide immediate relief for households in crisis. Offer temporary bill credits or hardship assistance for seniors, low-income families, and small farm properties hit the hardest by the increases. And I know that was talked a little bit this evening, and I appreciate that, I hope that that happens. Suspend late fees and dis, and, oh, I'm done, disconnections. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. The next speaker is Steve Laval, and, Steve Lavelle, apologize for that, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Nice to see you guys again. I have to say, I told you so. Your problem sits right there, and now he's leaving, but that's your leadership problem here in the town. You have a lot of upset citizens who are rightfully upset because you've lacked leadership in this organization for quite some time, and I'm glad to see them all here so we can kind of get them up to speed on what's been going on here in the town. But I wanted to address Mr. Baner, who's leaving. I was sent his email that he sent out to the employees today, and in that email, he says, quote, "We've built a culture where innovation is encouraged, different perspectives are valued, and every employee matters." I wonder if he thought that when digital media team spying on the employees here, silencing conservative employees? Do you think that then? All right. I was wondering, did you think that when you were pushing for BLM to be supported and the Marxist organization that it is? And I was wondering if you were doing that with the LGBTQ and the transgender community that you've bent over backwards with and you've actually cost taxpayer money with, because now you're renovating stations, fire stations that were built to be a hundred-year fire stations, but you're renovating like, I believe it's five or six of them at a cost of about forty million dollars. But that's okay, because you can just tax these people for their water, and me too, by the way, because I'm here too. By the way, my water rates increased too, from like seventy bucks to a hundred and eighty, so thank you, appreciate that. Also, did anybody ever ask the fire chief why he removed the electronic fire trucks from the budget? Did you guys do any research on that? So the problem that I see here is that, I'm trying to help you guys. I'm telling you that they don't tell you the truth, that they give you bad information, that they're lying to you, that they hide information from you so that you can make good decisions. And yet, here we are, right? You haven't been given good information to make sound decisions. Eight years, nobody stuck a camera down the sewers for eight years and became a crisis in this community that these people have to pay for, okay? That's lack of leadership. That's a lack of management, okay? That's the problem in this organization, and it starts at the top and it stays at the top. I'm going to leave you with this, you guys have a big decision, it'd be nice if he left a little earlier, but you have a big decision as a council to pick your next town manager, and I hope you pick one that has Christian values and loves America and is conservative, and is going to be conservative for us so that we don't continue to have to pay these taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, the next speaker is Josh Reynolds.
Mayor, members of the council, Josh Reynolds, I'm a current citizen of the town, and I was a former employee. Tonight, I want to talk to, well, you guys obviously, but the folks that are in the crowd here and also anyone that's watching online. You guys have a tough job to make, or, you know, obviously a tough job, and I think you guys get beat up a little bit. I'm online, just like anybody, and I see some of the comments, and I just want people to know that these folks have to make some tough decisions, and I think what we need to start doing is looking at the information you guys are given. I believe that the staff here, under Patrick Baner and his, and his leadership team, is, in my opinion, not giving you maybe the most accurate information, and you guys are the scapegoats, unfortunately, because you'll make decisions and have to deal with the ramifications. And I think we need to dig deep a little bit and look at our leadership team. So, and I know Steve kind of said a little, some of the stuff I was going to say, but, you know, today's a good day for the town of Gilbert. I'm not trying to come across negative, but Patrick going to Glendale is a good thing for this town of Gilbert, and I'm very excited about it, I know a lot of people are as well. But again, going back to the leadership, under Patrick's leadership here, his leadership team, your fire chief, I know Steve mentioned, he tried to buy three point three million dollars of electric fire trucks, and I'll just say for those that don't know, those electric fire trucks were out of service, the one they have is out of service more than it's in service. It's not a good, not a good purchase. And that was scrapped when Steve, along with a couple other gentlemen, brought some information to you guys' attention. Your police chief took a knee with BLM in June of 2020. That's not a leader, I think that's a cowardly move, in my opinion. And your HR director, in 2021, we provided the documents to you guys before, but in 2021, he tried to hire firefighters in the town of Gilbert based on race and gender, and we can provide those documents for you again. But again, I just wanted to kind of speak on the lack of leadership. I am happy that Patrick is leaving, I think this is a good day for Gilbert, and thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Alan Taylor. Alan, are you here? Okay, looks like he is not here. So our next speaker is, I believe that's Mitch Ellis. So Mitch Ellis?
Eleven, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is, I believe it's Mr. Clock.
Herman?
Pardon me?
Are you saying Herman?
Yes, yes, I couldn't, I couldn't quite make out your first name. And please be sure and give your name and city you live in, and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Evening, Mayor Anderson and council members. My name is Herman Cluck, Herman Frederick Cluck III, native, Arizona, resident of Gilbert currently, MBI class of seventy-nine. I watched this community build. My father, who was a World War II veteran, taught me about pride and patriotism and the gifts and the privileges we have being Americans. And I joined the American Legion to help support those. And I really think we need to reconsider taking away the parking lot of the men and women that give us the privileges in this town, in this country. To walk several blocks when some of our veterans can barely walk here? I really think you guys need to reconsider the alignment of the road that you're proposing because it hurts our veterans that, as has already been said, and I hate redundancy as much as you do, we raise money for this town, we support this town. As past president of our homeowners association, as past president of the Gilbert Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, and an American Legion, Sons of the Legion, and a rider, we're here to support the community. Don't take us away, please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next speaker is Robert Arnett. Robert Arnett, are you here? Okay, so we will move on. Our next speaker is John Cauldron. John Cauldron, are you here? Our next speaker is Kathy Hickey.
Hi, my name is Kathy Hickey, and I was born in Arizona also, and I have been living in Gilbert for a very long time. My great-grandfather was, is it, okay, my great-grandfather was the, he worked for the Gilbert Enterprise and owned that, and that was way back when it was barely nineteen-hundred, before it was a state. My grandfather graduated from Gilbert High. I taught in Gilbert for years and years, and I'm now retired. But I do have a concern about the water situation. I brought a copy of my bill, and as you can see, it went, and there are just two of us that live in this household, it went from four thousand to over forty-one thousand. We have not changed anything. I called the city out to take a look at this, and the first time they came out was in July, and they said that... And the first time they came out was in July, and they said that, that when they shut the water off, the water stopped. And when they turned it back on, it started again. So, there was nothing wrong with it. So, then I had them come out again last Monday. And I left a note trying to explain some things and asked them to please call me. I put it inside the box. Nobody ever called. I went yesterday to pull it out. It was just drenched in water from the rain. So, I don't know if they came or if they didn't come, but I don't know if anything's going to get fixed, but I'm just in fear for what's going to happen when I get my next bill because it just goes up and up and up every time. So, that's all I have to say, and I hope you do something.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Steve Kaufman. Steve, is he, is he not here? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, we have a few more left here. Our next speaker is Austin Walker. Austin, if you would please state your name and city you live in, you will have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good to go. Hi there. My name is Austin Walker, and I'm a reporter for Arizona's family. I just want to say, one, thank you for having us all speak today. I know this is a little bit unorthodox, so I'll keep it brief.
Okay, can you state the city you live in?
Yes, I live in Scottsdale, but I'm here working on assignment.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Other than that, for weeks, I have been talking with dozens, hundreds of people here in the town of Gilbert that have been reaching out to us, asking for help, saying that their bills aren't adding up, their usage isn't working, something is wrong, and they're asking the town for help, and they're getting limited to no answers. This all being said, we've asked to reach out to the town of Gilbert, specifically talk with Mayor Scott Anderson. I know a couple, you know, last week, we tried to talk to him. That didn't work out. This morning, we also reached out, and that didn't also work out. So, we know that you are transparent, are wanting to be transparent. And at the end of the day, you want to be honest. You wouldn't be here on the dais if you didn't love this town, you didn't love the people that were here and serving them. So, this being said, we're here to put these questions out that we've tried to ask, and we haven't got those answers to just yet, and know that we are here to be a vehicle and a vessel to help with that transparency. So, first is meters. We've had people reach out to us about this. The first thing is background. We've learned, you've heard from Nancy Stipp today, that Nancy had a faulty meter. We learned from the town of Gilbert that there were, should have been pulled, they were inaccurately calibrated. But this all being said, I asked how many are left, and that answer was not given to us. So, we don't know. And there's been stuff today asking, well, why don't we look at every single meter that's been placed, just to have a check and see if this is working? How do we know what's left? The second one is the water treatment facility for the north. The background, it was delayed quite a bit for a lot of things that you guys could not have anticipated, COVID-19, supply chain, and so on, so forth. But we asked, it got very expensive, about half a billion dollars more expensive, and the town telling us that the town saved money by doing this, about $30 million. So, I think the question here is, how did the town save money when the project got exponentially more expensive? And finally, are there other options? Has the town looked at anything else that they can do to alleviate the financial burden on residents right now, seeing next year about 100% increase on their water rate? I know this facility is being used to have water rates as well, excuse me, as well as service fees. And I know town policy regards enterprise funds, and it discourages funds from one area being used for the other. But this is a policy, not a law. So, has there been a conversation from the people, from you guys, talking about amending this policy, seeing if we can dip into other funds and use that to cover? This all being said, the reason I ask this is because recently, there was a project greenlit that shows about $600 million for parks when it comes to splash pads and something else, that that could be used. So, again, we want transparency. We want to help you. I just, these are the questions that I think a lot of people have asked us, and we're hoping that we can work with you and get those answers. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Buckley. Vice Mayor Buckley, I'm on point of order. Thank you. Trying to get some information to you. Sorry for the F-bomb-laden diatribe on you the other day.
Yeah.
I feel you still deserved it, but I'm sorry I gave it to you.
And I, and if I can respond, if I'm allowed to, just 10 seconds.
But I do want to say that I will try and get you as much information as I can because I do believe this has been rolled out in a way that people have problems. But I wanted to apologize.
Thank you.
For ripping your head off.
Thank you. And just to be clear on that, I would like to, if I have just 10 seconds, the quote that former Mayor Peterson said was, quote, "We had put on a, we had put a transportation bond on the ballot," said Peterson, who explained that bond was meant to free up other money that could be used. So, this was not related to the bond. It just was the idea that this bond was put in place to free up other money. So, it was not coming from that bond. We just want to make sure that's very much clear and transparent and crystal, so there's no other confusion on that. But I, again, want to say thank you so much, and we hope that we can work with you more to have some answers for people here. Thank you.
Please, no clapping. It's just inappropriate. Please. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. No, I wasn't talking to you.
I apologize.
I'm trying to keep the quorum going here. Okay, so our next speaker is Doreen Simmons, or Simons. Doreen, are you here? Okay, okay. Thank you. You guys are helpful. All right. Our next speaker is Daniel DeSantis. Thank you. All right. We are moving on. Our next speaker is Carissa Arnold. And Carissa, if you could state your name and your full name and your town you live in, you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Carissa Arnold. I conduct business in Gilbert, but I currently live in Mesa. I made a request in July of '24 of police records related to my daughter's sexual assault investigation in support of a civil case against her attacker. On August 7, 25, I received an email from Zach W., Gilbert Police Records Supervisor, informing me that the footage was no longer available due to a retention policy failure. My daughter was raped, harassed, contemplated suicide, and this claim of a simple oversight just ripped away her chances for justice. I began asking questions and obtained records that showed the following. In December of '24, the town clerk directed a policy to begin the mass deletion and purging of records starting January 13 of '25. State documents provided by the town clerk specifically state she is not authorized to set policy or procedure. I believe there were others involved in creating the policy to permanently delete public records, possibly including the town attorney and assistant town attorney. There seems to be a lot of question about what records to delete and how. It looks like records older than two years, including emails and recordings, are being deleted every day, and it doesn't look like the town has ever done anything like this before. Gilbert Police Senior Leadership seemed completely confused on, about, sorry, about nearly everything regarding my daughter's records. And I question if they made Zach W., the Police Records Supervisor, take responsibility for deleting my daughter's records, which we had been waiting for a year at this point. The town doesn't have a clear policy in effect for public records. The most current town code is over 12 years old and is significantly inadequate, and Gilbert Police doesn't seem to have any policies in place. The recent policy for deleting records was created under very questionable circumstances. The purge was created after the last meeting for the outgoing council, but before the first meeting of the new council. The policy appears to exist solely in email. It was never signed or written down. I fully believe that the timing of the deletion of these records was intended to hide evidence of corruption or cover-up. Tonight, I wonder if you're deleting records regarding everybody's historical water records to hide truth about water rates and meters. While I am submitting my own complaint to the Attorney General, I believe that I have provided enough information to compel the town council to request an immediate investigation by the Attorney General. I am also asking the town immediately stop deleting all records until after an investigation is complete. I believe my daughter's records can still be recovered, but doing so may reveal records that the town wants to hide. I am terrified by the thought that you might choose to protect the town's own reputation over protecting justice for all of our children. Thank you.
Carissa, I'm sorry. Did you, and I apologize for this, did you state the town you live in? It's for the record.
I did.
Pardon me?
I did in the very beginning, yes. I did. I said I lived in, I do conduct business in the town of Gilbert, but I live in Mesa.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. Our next and last speaker is Richard Davis. Richard Davis, are you here? All right. I guess that is it. So, with that, that concludes the communications with citizens for this council meeting. And I am going to turn this back over to our Mayor Anderson.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor? So, now that it's over, are we, just want to make sure, we can't respond bearing, but if something is said as related to transparency that I feel needs to be put on record for transparency based on what the reporter said, am I allowed to respond to that?
Maybe it's criticism or staff.
Well, I think it was criticism with the mayor.
It was criticism.
It was criticism with the mayor.
It was.
So, may I speak?
True.
So, I just, the one thing I want on record, because transparency does matter, is the day that they asked the mayor for that interview, he already had an appointment and asked me, the reporter asked me to step in and do the interview, which I did. It was not Austin. And Austin, I appreciate you talking, I was hoping you were coming back into the room. I appreciate you wanting to partner with us because that's what it's supposed to be. Media and government are supposed to be working together, so thank you. The thing I wanted to get on record was, in what appeared to be just criticism that we're not being transparent with the media, I did about a five, six, seven-minute interview, I think her name was Susan, you weren't there, at the water treatment plant. I offered, when that was done, because I said, I have a doctor's appointment at 10:00, but I'm happy to stay. It was a couple minutes late for it. What's important about that is, I offered to sit down and discuss with her, after that was done at a different time, the multitude of reasons that led to where we are now. It's multifaceted. She acknowledged that. I'm aware of that. And I said, I was more than happy to do that. The best, correct me if I'm wrong, but the best that I can tell, that interview never ran, and then you took one piece of it that had to do with, we use Ascend to help our struggling residents, so thank you for showing that. But I wanted to get that on record. There was an interview. I never saw it aired. And I did make an offer to your channel, sit down and talk about all of those reasons because it is important. You need to know, the citizens need to know. It's an issue. And it's, again, multifaceted. So, I'll leave it at that, just for the record.
Thank you.
This gentleman, I called him, but he might not have been here.
We have one other speaker that would like to speak, and before we get to the administrative items.
Okay, so I guess our last speaker is Noah James Markham.
Hello, Mayor, and to the rest of the city council. My name is Noah James Markham, and I live in the great city of Tempe. I'm a proud Democrat, and I love it. This water bill issue that's going on right now in Gilbert, we might have a lot of conspiracy theories, people here in Gilbert, that might think Arizona is not in a drought. I guess that could be the problem. And maybe people should really look how Arizona does not have a lot of water. But maybe Gilbert has more than other cities. But if we think that God will save us from the drought, that ain't true. That he will save it, no, it won't happen. But President Donald Trump said that he was going to make our economy cheaper. That's just not true either. I have requests that we have Section 8 here in Gilbert, and also I have requests that hopefully the city can fulfill here, that we have tea coil in the city council, modern theaters here in Gilbert for people of attorneys. So, the movies can connect to our landline devices while we're racking the money. I know we have subtitle devices at the movie theaters, but that could be upgraded too. I also have another request for the city, that concerts are in your auditoriums in the city and also in city plays or events. But we have, that we always have a sign language interpreter, no matter if someone asks for it or not, the sign language interpreter should always be there. I have one other thing about your police officers. Why don't they do their job by trying to pull over the people that spend 100 miles per hour in a 40 mile per hour lane or 25 mile per hour lane in Gilbert? Is it a brat full of money? But they have the audacity to distract a kid with a disability on the sidewalk. They give us support people in the city with disabilities. There's a huge problem with that. Oh, wait a minute, there's speed enforcement cameras all around Gilbert. Because of the speed, why is that? Because I got a ticket for turning right on a right stop sign, but this police officer was going 100 miles per hour in a 45 mile per hour lane. I also got, I also asked that we support DEI in the town of Gilbert. Maybe we should have a parade in downtown Gilbert, or maybe even a gay club in downtown Gilbert, so we can promote DEI in the community. I give you a quote, "It's easier to be evil than to be good as a person." Like your guy in the White House, but just like Hitler. America is not welcoming Hitler. Mahalo, and thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you very much. And now I'll give it back to the mayor again.
Thank you. Administrative items, we have two items. One, we probably should have put on consent. But first is item 38, which is, consider the reappointment of Mary Delay and new appointment of Erage Kadka to the Self-Inured Trust Board with terms beginning October 14, 2025 and ending September 30, 2028. Do I have a motion in a second?
I make a motion to approve item number 38.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Torrison. Please vote. Motion carries 7-0. Item 38A, I think there's been a request to postpone that item. Councilmember Lyons?
Yes, I'd make a motion to postpone that to the October 28 council meeting.
I second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Lyons, seconded by Vice Mayor Buckley, to postpone item 38A until the October 28, 2025 regular meeting. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Future meetings, you can see the items that have been requested, and some will be scheduled for the fall retreat, and some we'll have on a future agenda. We'll go to communications. Communications from the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I want to start with, last weekend, as we're all aware, we had some significant rainfall around the region, including Gilbert, Arizona, and we had a number of issues that our workforce responded to through all day Saturday and Sunday and into the evening. A couple statistics I'd like to highlight for you and show you the great work they did. We provided over 50 tons of sand, and 3,000 sandbags were distributed. Our Parks and Engineering crews worked early into the morning hours managing road enclosures and flood conditions, and Gilbert Fire responded quickly to a structured fire that was caused by a lightning strike. That was a significant event in our community. We're very proud of our workforce that responded and helped mitigate that damage to our community and impact to our residents. Moving into department and division highlights, it's National Community Planning Month in October, so we're going to highlight our Development Services Team, led by Kyle Mira's. Their primary areas of service are planning Their primary areas of service are planning and code compliance, transportation planning, development engineering, and plan review and inspections, as well as data content and strategy. The impact they have in transportation planning, we received $177 million in regional funding, provided over 49,000 certified ADA rides, issued over 1,527 total commercial permits in '24, and 2,349 residential, and 387 single-family, 418 total planning cases, and almost 1.3,000 Gilbert 311 code compliance requests, completed almost 24,000 inspections, and 12, just over 12,000 backflow device inspections as well. They've got some great dashboards they have created, so you can dive in and learn more information, gain more information and insight into our community and our development, and where it's occurring, and in which categories. And one of the projects that is underway that we've highlighted is the Gilmore Project. Moving on to retirements, recognitions, and awards, we want to recognize firefighter Wesley Roskowitz. He is retiring with over 24 years of dedicated service to our community. He's been an integral part of our team and demonstrating unwavering commitment, bravery, and a true passion for service, and we wish him well and thank him for his service to go over to Arizona. We want to recognize Ashley Deering and June Wilson in our Clerks Department. They both received their Certified Municipal Clerk designations. Earning the CMC designation takes at least three years of training and clerk experience. We're proud to share that both team members achieved that milestone in August, so very proud and congratulations again, Ashley and June. We also want to recognize the Parks and Rec team, who was recertified for their CAPRA accreditation. It's a distinction earned by fewer than 1% of agencies nationwide, and it reflects excellence, innovation, and impact. They were also a 2025 Gold Medal finalist, one of four finalists nationally for setting a high standard in Parks and Recreation. We also want to thank the Gilbert community for 911 Day of Service. We had 97 projects completed, almost 6,700 volunteers involved from 88 organizations, and almost 14,000 hours of time donated by those individuals, and they are certainly the lifeblood of our community. With that, that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Patrick. Report from the council? Councilmember Lyons?
Just want to remind everybody, we have a Veterans Day celebration coming up Tuesday, November 11. There'll be a car show from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and a ceremony from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Gilbert Water Tower Plaza. This is a good time to come out and honor our veterans, and I would encourage everyone to please come and participate and to enjoy that time that we have with them. Thank you.
You, Councilmember Torgerson?
I wanted to remind people that this Saturday, October 18, there'll be a live pumpkin carving event during harvest in the Heritage District. I probably won't be there, because the water rates are high, and there's sharp knives there, and you're out here. Sorry, but safety first, gentlemen. That'll take place at the Water Tower from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, and open house style, so stop by any time. Also, the Heritage District visitors and businesses are encouraged to learn about new developments coming soon to the downtown at diggingthedistrict.com. Construction projects can significantly impact visitors and businesses, so town staff will update the website regularly with information on parking, events, road closures, and other ongoing improvements in the Heritage District. In addition to sharing project renderings and interactive mapping tools, diggingthedistrict.com shares information about the Heritage District Wayfinding and Place Marketing Project. I did feel that unfortunately, with everything that's gone, we weren't able to address some of the comments from people, as I think the criticism of avoiding things. So I hope that maybe our civil discourse can go further and understand that everybody was heard that spoke this evening, because I didn't think we addressed some of those things. But one thing I wanted to point out is, Frank, you lost a member, and he and another member tried to intervene, and they got there just moments too late. Jim Savini took his own life, and he was one of the Legion members, and the suicide rate amongst veterans is absolutely abhorrent. I have a friend that I worry about almost daily, and it's just something that we should recognize, because it's not just the cost of doing business for him, it's something that we all can do better by, and I just wanted to say that person shouldn't go unrecognized. So thank you.
Councilmember Banji Rani?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a quick comment before I give the Parks and Rec report. So I try to be available on social media and answer questions. At times, it may come off as rude, and I apologize for that. I will no longer be on social media after a few expresses anymore. With that said, we as a council have a handful of residents who go out of their way to be negative. There was one such resident who was going out of his way to find my post and respond to every one of them negatively. I tried something different with him. I found common ground. That common ground was the Arizona Rattlers. This gentleman and I, over the past few months, became friendly and plan on going to a game together in the spring. This weekend, he committed suicide. Folks, people out there are hurting due to multiple reasons. What I've learned is that we need to work together to be more civil. We can work together more. This isn't us versus them. We all live here together. We need to take a step back and listen and have a conversation. Something I've learned is that when you have an ear of a decision-maker, speak into it. If you yell into it, you may go deaf and not be able to listen anymore. Let's work together on these issues. With that, let's talk about Parks and Recs. Excuse me. Gilbert Concerts in the Park. Grab a blanket on your favorite lawn chair and join us this fall for live music in our free concerts in the park. Enjoy some tasty takeout from one of many Gilbert restaurants and enjoy the tunes. Performances will run from 6:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. and include a variety of family-friendly local musicians. October 16 will feature The Common Good. October 23 will feature Clark Cole and High Horse. Second event, Pumpkin Dunk. The Third Annual Pumpkin Dunk will be held at Greenfield Pool on Saturday, October 18. This event will feature activities such as splashing around with floating pumpkins. Cool. Pumpkin decorated and more. We look forward to seeing you all there get waterlogged in the pumpkin patch. And that's it, thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Well, on a happier note, the council would like to wish Mayor Anderson a very happy birthday. Today is Mayor Anderson's birthday. And so we have some cookies from Liberty Market back in the back room to celebrate. So happy birthday, Mayor Anderson.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Thank you for being here. Ditto the comments that you've heard tonight. I have no other specific reports from the mayor. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second.
We are adjourned.